Good evening and welcome. Thank you for coming. We have a crowded room tonight. And I expect that we'll have
Yeah.
A good show online. I'm Adam Block. I'm the Chair of the Planning Board and I'm finding a quorum of members present. I call this meeting to order. This meeting of the Planning Board, as all of our meetings, are being conducted in a hybrid manner consistent with current state regulation. And is being recorded, as you can see here. All materials supporting the agenda for this meeting, including the agenda, are available on the town's website, which is needamma.gov. The first item on our agenda is a public hearing for major project site plan special permit number two thousand twenty-three dash zero three. With Nehi LLC as the petitioner for redevelopment of a site on Highland Avenue at six twenty-nine dash six six one. But before I open that hearing, as we're still awaiting another colleague, I'm going to proceed with the second item on our agenda, which is an A and R plan for Arthur Fine Homes LLC as the petitioner. For a property located at two forty-eight Harris Avenue. Here's Natasha. So well, Natasha, we've just jumped into the second item. So we'll go to the hearing after. Are you Alex? Can you please bring up the site plan for two forty-eight Harris Ave? So we just want to call one thing out that I saw on the site plan. So obviously, we know this is number two forty-eight, but Alex, if you're able to move over a little bit. Sorry that my shine ball head isn't right here. It says two eighty-four. So if there is my law, we'll probably have to have that changed. For for a signature or cross it out, I suppose. One question that I had is, what's the purpose of subdividing sixty-three square feet?
Well, I think their person is looking, the neighbors is interested in acquiring that that slip road land.
The sixty-three feet? And the minimum lot size for a buildable law?
Is these are two existing lots. So there's a conforming lot, which is the ten thousand square foot requirement for the district. That lot is ten thousand five hundred square feet. And there's a pre-existing non-conforming lot of forty-five hundred square feet, which is the receiver lot on the on the spark twelve land is coming off of a larger lot.
And then if someone were chose to were to choose to demolish that house, they'd still be able to build. You know, you know, a house. You know, on the lot, right? Even though it's such a small lot.
Well, there might be some specialty relief that's required, but that's not what's being proposed here. The only thing that's being proposed here is the convenience.
Right, I understand that. And I just wanted to be, you know, to understand the circumstance and that we're all clear on the board. Do my colleagues have any comments or questions on this?
No, it's pretty straightforward. Just moving some property from one lot to another for for reasons that agreed upon between the parties.
I do have a comment. I think that it's confusing to understand what's being proposed here just on the face of the plan. And I think what's needed on the plan is that the lot, lot one oh one, the ten thousand five hundred square foot lot, on the plan, the address of that lot should be driven. The address two forty-eight Harris Avenue should be written on the lot. And or with an arrow pointing to the law.
Well, it's not, it's it's in the foundation of the house, two forty-eight.
Where is it? It's present right here. That's what I pointed out.
Oh, but that doesn't doesn't, I guess, expressly say that it's Harris Avenue, but maybe that goes. All right, I had missed that. I
As opposed to ninety-six.
And then ninety-six is at least written. Okay. Maybe that's good enough. I was just puzzled over which is which and this one's Harris Avenue? Because I thought having your dress for the help, but now that I see it's there. And then the respective ownership of lot one oh one and lot one oh two isn't shown on the plan. It's stated that the owner in the application. Name of the applicant is Arthur Fine Homes LLC. But that doesn't appear anywhere on the plan, does it? I can't see it.
Well, it says, yeah, it says owner applicants. It says James Rollback, ninety-six Bradford Street.
Is that on the plan or just from the application?
Uh, no, there is something on the plan. It says owners applicants, James Rollback.
Well, that's lot one oh two.
That's lot one oh two.
Yeah, lot one oh one is not owned by the
No, that's owned by Arthur Fine Homes.
Never, that comes from Arthur Fine Homes, but the application says that the applicant is Arthur Fine Homes. And this I did the plan identifies the applicant is James Rollback. So and the address and then Nick, I was giving the address. So we're to understand that Arthur Fine Homes is the owner of lot one oh one. Yes.
Yeah, but I don't know that that's what people require.
Oh, that the owner of the land be identified.
On the lot?
Well, I think I think we I think we should just have the I mean, there's the issue of the the number of different transports. Why don't I just I'll have these corrections made on the my law and will sign a corrected my law.
Yes.
I think that's cleaner.
Ask them to just mark on the lots now what formerly are Arthur Fine Homes, now now formerly of Jane Rollback.
Right, yeah, something something I'd like to clarify. Thank you. Thank you. Yes. Well, with that, with those minor changes that would be made to the plan and wanting to correct an obvious error. I know that we endorse the plan subdivision for not required.
We have a motion by Gene, a second by
Second.
By already any discussion on the motion, caring none, I'll take a voice vote, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. It's unanimously decided. And Lee, when do you anticipate the my law? Will shall we do that at someone's house or?
Well, I hope you have it back on by Thursday and I have a meeting with Gene and Natasha that night, so I'll just get your signatures at that point. Now I'll just call one of you to come into the office by today.
Okay, that's fine. I'm around the corner, so happy to do that. So I had a clear item to which brings us to the first item in our agenda.
Oh, maybe this is ready. I didn't see it because we were sharing screen. I think he is the applicant, just so you know, I leave it to you, Adam, but.
The applicant for
A and R plan.
I see. So sure, let's bring him over.
Yeah, if you can hear me, if you can hear me, I my all my questions have been answered. I just wanted to weigh in on sort of the background of why this transfer was being requested.
Would you like to comment on that?
No, all it is is there was a so the house, the larger property lot is a brand new building. There was a garage that abutted my property and had a two-foot easement behind it, which sort of encroached into what I consider my backyard. The builder said he was willing to give me those two feet and hence we have the sixty-three foot transfer.
I see. So thank you.
The garage is gone. The property line now will be straight. And both parties are amicable.
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you, Jim. Anything else?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Alex, thanks for mentioning that. So I I I mentioned before, you know, I would like the hearing to be about about an hour. It's close to seven fifteen. There's some procedural things that we're going to proceed with momentarily. We anticipate this will be the first of at least two, maybe three sessions of a hearing. But we'll discuss that. We'll discuss that tonight. And we'd like to be able to hear from, you know, from residents that are here with us tonight. You have an opportunity to speak tonight. If the timing runs tight, given the rest of our agenda, then you can certainly send us an email, which will be included as part of the record. And in addition to that, at a subsequent hearing as well. So this is not your one and only time to participate in the process. Again, I now call to order the hearing on special permit number two zero two three dash oh three with Nehi LLC as petitioner with respect to the redevelopment of the property for six twenty-nine dash six sixty-one Highland Avenue.
Mr. Chairman, I move to wave the reading of the notice.
About to ask for such a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, hearing none. I'll come to the vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. We unanimously decided to waive the reading of the notice. Very good.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a statement for you?
Yes.
I wanted to be on the record. I'll go up and tell that we need to do that. Temple Beth Shalom is kind of directly across the street from this project. It's across the street and a little bit farther down. I am general counsel for Temple Beth Shalom, which as general counsel, I am I am an ex officio member of the Board of Trustees of Temple Beth Shalom. I checked the Temple Beth Shalom. It appears that they did that they were served with notice, so I guess they are formally considered an butter to this property. I have discussed, I I have checked with the management of Temple Beth Shalom. They they have no position on this application. And I spoke with Town Council and confirmed that I do not have a conflict of interest. But as a matter of caution, in case someone feels that there's an appearance of a conflict, I have filed with the town clerk the required paperwork for that. And I wanted to just totally upfront with the applicant, in case they had a problem with my being here. I'm I'm planning to sit on this and to hear any interest.
Very good. Thank you for the statement. Appreciate you looking into that matter.
Given Mr. Albert's statement that his client has no position on the application, I don't see any conflict.
Okay. Thank you very much, Attorney Huber. So with us tonight for the petitioner are Evan, Attorney Evans Huber, Robert Doherty. Would you like to come to the table? You're going to be speaking and presenting tonight?
I need to all come up with.
Okay.
Yeah, I think because we have a big team here.
Okay. All right. If we do, we'll get some chairs.
We'll probably have five people speaking, so.
So show me.
You don't all need to be at the same time, though.
Oh, you can play a musical chair. I don't mind dance. We can play a little disco. That's fine. Also, we have Jody Zestman as applicant. Architects John Cocker and Colby Kavanaugh, who I believe is with us by Zoom. That's you.
Yeah.
You're not you're Colby?
Yes.
All right, so that's
That's so we can present.
Yes, so I got it. Pull it up in a second.
Now I understand. I appreciate that. Thanks for the correction. Traffic engineer Jeff Dirk, civil engineer Justin Moscow, I think I saw you inside, and landscape architect Shawna Gil Smith. Thank you very much. Nice to see you. Promise will be easy on your tennis arm. Evans, the floor is yours. And if I can ask you ideally twenty minutes. Well, thank you very much. For the presentation.
That would be ideal.
Things are never ideal, as you know. I've assured my team that you would be happy with thirty minutes. So thank you. We're here before the board seeking site plan review for this project. It's there are five existing buildings on this eighty-two thousand square foot lot. The proposal is to demolish all the existing buildings and build one single building of fifty thousand square feet, two stories. So it's on a twenty-five thousand square foot footprint to be used as a medical office building. There is the proposal also includes two hundred and fifty parking spaces, which meets the bylaw requirement for medical office parking on two levels, one of which is below grade and the other which is partially at grade and partially directly below the building. And just, I mean, I have a team of very competent professionals here who's going to walk you through the details of the project, but I do want to just point out at the outset that we are not asking for any zoning relief. This is a use that's allowed by right under the bylaw and it meets all the dimensional criteria of the bylaw. So no zoning relief is required. We have also met with the neighbors, butters on both sides, on both the on the other side of Cross Street and on the other side of Arbor Street. And now where what their primary concerns are, and we're certainly taking those into account. So with that, I'm going to, since you've already introduced everyone, thank you, I'm going to ask our architect John Cocker to start with the presentation.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Obviously, my name is Jonathan Cocker. I'm one of the principal owners at not with the Stefano. I'm just going to run you through, we're going to kind of start with some of the existing conditions and and comparison between the existing and what we're proposing. And then we're going to move into some of the renderings and try and give you a 3D perspective of what the project looks like. And then I have some some plans at the end, but I may try and skip through those so that we can let everybody else present and we can follow back up. And there's questions from there. So I trust that most of you have already reviewed the existing site or are aware of it in town. Here's just some of the the existing photographs that we'll include in your package. Or we can get in the next plan. Over to the next page. Thank you. I was just taking it.
Yeah, just
Because it's remote. Thank you. All right. On the left, we have the existing property where you can see that there's five existing buildings. There is very limited green space. There is an abundant supply of parking lot and impertinent material on this particular site. In in addition, I'd like to point out that there's parking on Cross Street between the building in the middle that directly backs up into Cross Street. And so you're using the street as your your turning lane and the same thing on Arbor Street directly to the south of where that is. And you can see the buildings are right along high ends with very little green space. Our proposal is we're going to tear all five of those down, combine them into a single structure that we have moved towards the center of the site, which allows for a reduction of about three hundred and fifty square feet from what the existing building footprint is. In addition, it's a just under a thirteen thousand square foot reduction in paved area in order to get the two hundred and fifty parking spaces that we need compared to the old buildings. And we've increased about just under twelve thousand square feet of green space between the buildings and the surrounding streets. So you can see the present difference in green space here than we have. Just with next slide is just the overlay, the blue in this particular plan is those existing buildings. The red is the outline of our footprint. And you can see there's really just twenty-five percent of our parking that is surface, surface parking. Everything else is below grade concealed within a slope of the site. It's pretty, you can see all of the landscaping that we're doing in the front that John is kind of talking about in eighteen minutes. So from here, I can probably go to some of the 3D renderings. And I think this kind of shows you what's happening with the grading on the site a little better than those floor plans. So what we're looking at here is Highland Ave is on the left-hand side. You can see our sidewalk and all of the green space that we created to get the parking concealed underneath the building. So what you're looking at here is a two-story office building, a level of parking underneath that that is a story. And then there's another story below that that you can't see that's that's below ground. We have added features like an accessible route from the corner there so that you can get into the building as you come down Cross Street. It's still hanging on us. All right, as we as
So there's sorry about that.
So the sidewalk that you see going down to where the driveway is, that is allowing us our accessible route from Highland Ave to the lower or to the upper level of parking, which is where the main entry to the building is in this particular case. Given that the building's elevated, we're entering through an elevator lobby in a building like you with downtown Boston. And then that's how we're getting our access up into the building.
Excuse me, is that where everyone goes in or just only? So that's the main entrance?
That is the main entrance to this building is is underneath. There's there's two levels of main entry and both parking levels have that.
Yeah.
And we also have access off of both streets that you're going to see as we as we go around the property here. So when you enter on Cross Street now, upper level of parking has access basically right off of Highlands here. The building is elevated enough that all of our deliveries are going in through this entry and underneath building as well as all fire trucks, ambulances, things like that are able to access underneath the building as well.
Awesome. Are the when they're accessing the wheelchair access zone, are they crossing then over the exit of the parking lot?
Parking garage. Yes, just like when you cross the street.
So they're crossing, so they're crossing over there.
But we're going to show you there's handicap parking directly adjacent to where those elevators are. So any vehicle access has drop offs directly next to that as well. This is just for pedestrians that would be on Highland.
Is Cross Street dead end to your property or does it continue beyond?
We're going to kind of get back to there, but short answer is yes, it dead ends. It does not connect to the property behind us. It does have a street off to the right that that you can't see here that goes off to where some of the butters are.
Yeah.
All right, we also have a little patio area out out in the green space here that that is for all occupants of the building to use. So if we continue down Cross Street, this is if you come to the end of Cross Street, we've created an access drive across the back of the site that connects up to Arbor on the other side. That's also where we get our entry to the lower level of parking. This is the only corner of that lower level that's visible. It's it's underground everywhere else. And we're we're obviously going to soften those walls with some landscaping and and materials like that. Let's go to the next slide. As you come back up to the connecting side of Arbor, you can see we're up again that that parking level to to the upper parking level. We've landscaped all the way along Arbor Street. This is the only section of parking that is really visible. Every everything else is either under the building or or underground. We have added features like solid retaining walls across there so that headlights from vehicles are not disrupting any of the neighboring residents as well as the screening on on the walls that are there, the living screen that even see rendered.
What is preventing the headlights?
It's a solid concrete wall. So yeah, so you can see the vehicle on the on the fronts right there. And you can see that that wall is up above where hood level would be so that that, you know, in New England, it this time of year starts to get dark around five o'clock. That way people coming and leaving are not disturbing the adjacent residents as we do that.
Those entrances to the underground parking?
Yes, okay, yes, there are three drive aisles. When we come back to the floor plans, those are the only openings. Everything else is screened so that we we hide as much of that parking or disguise it.
Those are entrances to the upper level.
Correct.
Under the building. There's another level below.
Oh, right.
Correct.
But the first Cross Street entrance to parking, that was to the upper level?
Yes, to the upper level.
Right. And then and then there are two upper level entrances on Arbor.
Yes.
And one lower level entrance.
Yes, yes. And as we come back to the floor plan, you're basically entering on on the perpendicular. And then there's three rows that come off. And those those three openings that you're seeing are the three main parking aisle rows. And that's how you come underneath the buildings in the rear.
You can access the lower level from Arbor or Cross.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, the idea here is that we're trying to, as Jeff is going to talk about, disperse traffic onto both streets just to minimize all the load onto Cross like it's today.
Can I ask you a quick question? It looks like all your drawings are stamped. Is this the CV set or permit drawings or bid set?
It's just the submission to you guys.
They are required to be stamped.
It was required to be stamped.
So that we could submit. So what level of the project are you in right now? Just because looking at this and these are pretty finished.
We have not even started construction documents on this. This is all just the the project to 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 the town.
Okay. No, just just trying to understand where the drawings are and where, okay.
Yeah, civil was obviously much further on than we are because they have to do all the drainage calculations and and that that we're talking about. We have not detailed a single wall section through here yet. So there's there's there's
Okay.
Change.
Thank you.
The, as you saw before, there's some rooftop equipment that will all be screened as well. We've located it towards the rear of the site, which is why you can see a little more of that from the back. So it's not as visible from Highlands. Given that it's a medical office building, there there are some pretty significant floors that we have to have. And so that equipment does get wherever large, which is why we're screening it. Let's go back up to Highland. Probably with the next one. And then as you as you come back around Highlands, again, you can see all the landscaping that we're adding here as we push the buildings back from the road. Let's go to materials real quick. So we've obviously tried to create a sleek, modern medical office building. Building materials are are obviously, we have a lot of glass for window line. We have all the white panels are aluminum composite panels. It's modern. There are metal material that weathers very well. It's actually, you have similar materials on the building that are here. They're just in a smaller scale. We have screening for rooftop units on the top. We've also added screening down at the parking level. So that's it's minimizing the visibility for parties that are under you to build that. And then we have some sun shades, sun shades that go as an eyebrow across the the second story of the building, just creating some some interest to the building. And then let's go to the floor plans for a quick, I think, just a few minutes. So for plan wise, this is the lowest level of parking. So you can see our entry is off of to the access aisle between Cross and Arbor. Allows you to fully circulate between the site. And then you can see the color entry lobby with some lower level accessible parking for occupants coming by by vehicle. If we go off the story, this is the upper level of parking, which has your your one access off of Cross Street. We're always moving the arrow with accessible parking in the middle, our lobby down below that, and then a loading zone directly next to that. And then that also has access out to Arbor at the rear of parking site. So you can now see the main three aisles of parking going left to right across the page. And those are the three openings that we're seeing on on that rear rendering.
What is it on the kind of the top left of the that site view? Isn't it? It's like there's another structure behind the trash.
So the trash is on the upper level of the parking. That's a pad for the
Transformer.
Transformer, that's the electrical.
So that's down lower.
Yeah, that's all the way down at the lowest level of parking. And then we've tried to screen it on the rear of the site as best we can.
Understood. Thank you.
Unless you want me to put it up by Highland. It's not. It's not ideal. We'd like to keep it in the rear of the site if we can.
Are you going to designate any entrance exit locations, whether to be the upper or lower levels?
So this is this is all two-way traffic. Design this two-way traffic and Jeff is going to get into why that's being done right after I'm done with our
So there's not going to be any designation. It's our lower level wise, but Arbor, Cross.
The idea is to disperse in both directions and and minimize that
so that we're not overloading one of the streets.
So if someone is walking to it, they go down the ramp.
Correct.
Or that's a walkway.
Yep.
And then how do they navigate to the main entry?
So there is a directly so that upper ground rectangle is a stair. That's one of our eager stairs. There's a sidewalk directly adjacent to that. And then there will be access aisles that come all the way down to the main lobby, right through all that handicap parking.
No, it's hard to see without zooming in, but there's a cross you cross right here. This is a landscape plaza. And there is a connection and will be signage that points you in this direction. And you'll be able to see this will all be glass. You'll be able to see the main lobby all the way across.
The one thing I find funny is immediate reaction is that for pedestrians, I don't know how many people are going to arrive on the foot.
Yeah.
But you've got to walk through two, you've got to cross two or three main aisles of traffic within the site just to get to the main entry. As opposed to, you know, flipping it, having where they have that locate that where the handicap.
So there there's some eager concerns as to why we're doing that. One of the stairs has to exit directly to the outside of the building, which is not where you would want your main lobby in the building. Um, one of the stairs has to exit directly to the outside of the building, which is not where you would want your main lobby in the building. If we come up a floor. To the main building. Um, we have a stair on the on the top side of the page, which is our 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 main eager stair that goes between both floors. The the location of the lobby in the center of the building allows better dispersion of um occupants to the tenants when they occupy the building. As opposed to placing them on the far ends and then making them walk the entire length of the building if their if their doctor is down on on the south side of the page.
We certainly have flipped it back and forth a few times um to see how it would work the best. And given the tight site and the number of parking spaces that we're trying to achieve the most efficient parking layout that we had. And then keeping our stairs a certain distance, making sure one of the stairs dumps out outside of the building here. And not directly onto that parking garage level was the concern, which is where we've ended.
Alright, uh and really we have two core plan layouts that are that are the same and then we have a roof plan. I'd I'd like to hit on the the lighting plan as our our last architectural piece here and then I might hand it on to Jeff for for. Um, traffic. Um, obviously, we need to light the site for safety. Um, but we have um used dark sky compliance um light fixtures. The only pole mounted lights that we have are the access drive in the back and um the twenty-five percent of our parking that is outdoors. Uh, and even then, um the against the building, we've uh elected to not install pole mounted fixtures and do a wall mounted picture like the SW one. It's a full power fixture so that we're minimizing what's uh you know the effect of of pole lights. Um, this is a uh non-overlooked site, really all we're providing is um. Lighting for parking and then lighting uh around some of the um walkways via um the handrail lights. Um, so that they're they're hidden in disguise. Um, as well as uh the G one two is is some of the uh painted pictures that would be used within the parking garage itself. Uh, we certainly comply with with the what what handle requirements uh of the town for the lighting. Um, and then our our zero um, you know, hook handle spillage is stops at the property and that's what's highlighted with the orange line.
At what time will those lights be turned off?
Yeah, so um I would say we we obviously need a security building. You also need to comply with the the town maybe. I don't remember what that is right off the top of my head. Um, so we'll work with you guys on what that that time requirement is.
I I have a question about lighting. Is this an appropriate time to ask it?
Uh, so we have more to present. I I was assuming you wanna hear all of the presentations and then we can come back and answer your questions. So at this point, I might pass this off to to Jeff, um Dirk.
So just by way of a high view or a high level summary of the transportation assessment, so it's prepared in accordance with town standards, but also NASTIOT standards. Um, which sets the parameters that we need to follow preparing the transportation assessment, I think similar to what the architect was mentioning in terms of stamping the planes. Uh, we also, I stamped the transportation study with signifying that it was prepared in accordance with all the standards. Uh, the important thing is that we do it in consultation with the town. Uh, so we work with Lee and um the departments in the town to understand um the roadway infrastructure as it exists today, but also as it may exist in the future. And I think importantly in this area is consideration of development projects, but others of course, um the Muzzy Port Site, Gack Street, very close to the site. Uh, that's included in our in our assessment, not only the traffic laws, we're not counting. But also the improvements that are planned um as well along Highland Avenue, so that's all built into our analysis. So as a planning study, we're including not only this project, but also planned development that's uh been approved or may be approved in the future in this area. Uh, I know there's a lot of people here from Putnam Street, so that was a consideration on transportation assessment. Uh, as we look at the impact of this project, and I think as you heard the architect mention. One of the reasons why the architectural plans are so advanced are with some of the things that Colby had mentioned in terms of looking at pedestrian circulation. But from our standpoint as uh transportation engineers, the critical thing uh was that we have dispersal of traffic. That the way those garages load and unload, that there's an opportunity for traffic to use either Arbor or Cross. Uh, focusing traffic on one street or the other creates congestion, um especially because as we look at the circulation, most of the traffic is oriented towards Interstate ninety-five. Or toward that direction, uh so we want the ability for those left turn movements to happen at either of those streets. Uh, so that we have dispersal of of trips. Uh, what that does in terms of uh looking at how the project impacts queuing and how it might impact the ability to be able to get in or out of. Is looking at the queue in those left turns. So what we would shown is with that dispersal of traffic. Uh, the queue on either Arbor or Cross ranges from one to five vehicles to twenty-two hours. Um, so what that means is as we look at where the driveways are positioned, a queue of about five vehicles. Uh, doesn't get us back to a point where it's blocking the ability to be able to get out of the garages. So if the queue on Cross extended back, let's say by five vehicles and block that first driveway, you can come up the back. So that's the whole reason why the circulation pattern and looking at how the garages are designed is important to allow for. Uh, selection of one of those two streets based on what people experience in terms of delays or queuing at some of the intersections. Um, importantly, there's there's no safety deficiencies. We looked at crash data along Highland Avenue. Um, to signalize intersections on either side as well as along where the frontage of the property is. Uh, there's no significance in terms of the number of crashes that are happening. Bicycles, um and that the crashes are not disproportionate. There are crashes, but the number of crashes is not disproportionate to the volume. If it's on that section of roadway. And then lastly, in terms of uh safety sightlines, so we've ensured that the sightlines, the driveways, as well as coming out on the Highland Avenue. Uh, exceed what's required for the speed that people are actually driving on the highway. Um, the statutory speed limit is thirty. Most of the people are driving somewhere between thirty and thirty-five miles an hour. Uh, we have sightlines that exceed what's required for thirty-five miles an hour, so we made sure that the driveways as positioned and designed will operate safely.
What percentage of traffic, you're saying uh there's gonna be heading towards one twenty-eight as at least? Sounds like left, left, sound a couple of words going left, what percentage?
It's it's, we'll have the slide in a minute, but it's about fifty-four percent we're expecting, so let's say about fifty-five percent of the traffic will be going in that direction. Next slide please. This slide, you can see, but it's just shows the context of the project. Thank you, Colby.
Yeah.
Uh, there where it says site, you can see interchange um just to the east of the project site. That's where about fifty-five percent of the traffic is heading in that direction. Some of it will be on um Hunter Road and Groove as well, but it's generally the majority of that traffic. Would be heading toward the interchange area itself. Next slide please. This slide shows the uh existing conditions in the area and just in terms of how to read the slide that's there. The orange lines are where there are sidewalks, where you see the blue lines are where there are crosswalks. And then we, as you know, that there are bike lanes along Highland Avenue as well in both directions recently added. Um, the purpose is really is to say this is, as you were talking about pedestrian circulation, it's a highly walkable and bikable site. Uh, so this is an amenity that we have, so we have a transportation domain management program that is set to really encourage mostly employees. But certainly we wanna make sure the building is designed to to the fact that anyone who's coming there for um a visit is able to walk a bike to the site. Uh, but again, the amenities that are out there, the infrastructure that's available supports that and bike travel. And so we wanna make sure that as the project is designed, you could walk and bike and get there safely, so the questions that were asked about. Now crossing the driveways and things, those are important because we wanna encourage those modes of transportation.
You had mentioned the circles are representing crosswalks.
Correct.
What's the definition of the crosswalk in this space?
Uh, physically marked on the ground, so the pavement markings.
You're saying that Arbor Street and Highland Avenue is a physical designation to cross Highland Avenue at that point?
Oh, no, cross, cross those streets. Yes. Right, but not across Highland. The only crosses of Highland happen at the two signalized intersections. Um, and we would never suggest to put them in car crossing or crossing anywhere else except for where there's a signal. There's just, you know, not to get into too finite a detail, there's twenty thousand vehicles a day that go by this section of roadway. Um, about seventeen hundred vehicles, um and this is bidirectional numbers, so twenty thousand over twenty-four hours. Uh, the peak hour numbers are about seventeen hundred vehicles, and again, that's in two-way directions. Um, so that gets to crossings at signals and not at the unsignalized intersection. Next slide.
Can I ask you a question? When you go back to the last slide. There a benefit to entering and exiting through Arbor Road versus Cross Cross Street? Since you have the street, you have mills on the other side.
There's not, so the advantage, there really is not an advantage using one or the other. The advantage comes to where you're coming and going to. So if you're to and from the west of the site, obviously Arbor would be easier for you to get into, so we expect that. As you're looking at the distribution of traffic, especially as it's it's arriving, most of the traffic is if you're coming from the east that you're gonna use easterly most point. And I think the GPS is gonna assign you that way, cause that's your first driveway to come to.
The only reason I bring this up is because on the right, on the other side of Cross Street are residences. On the other side of Arbor is another, is is commercial. So I'm wondering why the entrance is on Cross and not on Arbor and I'm wondering if there are benefits of Arbor. Not having mills across the way for traffic.
The the volume of traffic coming out of mills is in such that it really makes it from a traffic. Um, standpoint of either concentration of traffic. Either one would work, the most important thing to me is this dispersal of traffic, cause we don't. If you concentrate the left turns at one or the other intersection, it starts to create delays. And so we do wanna lock our dispersal, so I I would say it's two-way access by way of either one, um rather than having one be more of an entrance versus an exit. The dispersal of traffic, I think mostly as it relates to exiting was is important for the way that from the site functions. So I think that's why, you know, people will be more more oriented to use the first street that they come to depending on where they're arriving from. Typically, when you're exiting, it may be depending on where you're parked in garage, if you know you can get out to either street. Um, you can provide wayfinding signs within the site to try to encourage people to use one street versus the other. And I think those are some of the things, again, we are, uh one of the later slides I have is discussing, of course, how we might be able to effectuate. Changes that relates to the potential for people to use Putnam Street. Wayfinding signs within the garage is an opportunity to do that. Uh, but but basically where, which streets you would use as you're entering depends on the direction you're coming from. As you're exiting. It's really positioned within the garage.
And not Natasha, just in case it's not clear, you can access Arbor or Cross from both levels of parking. So if you're on the upper.
Right, but the main entrance is on Cross, because that's where you have the plaza, that's where you have a pedestrian entrance.
That, well, that's an entrance to the to the underground portion.
Both of them are entrances. I'm I'm not designating one main entrance. It's only from uh the accessible, there's one accessible route. From Highland four eight pedestrian into the building that would be through Cross.
Right.
That has to be there because of the grading and the limitations on the site, but from a vehicle perspective. We can sign both of those as an entry point so that not everybody can enter the box to enter third vote, enter the lines of fairness.
So regarding, so sorry, I'm I'm just just because it's related to the background thing. Um, so. What I'm getting to is if the, if it was equal on both sides, which you're saying it isn't, so pedestrian, so grading, you have to enter on the low side.
Correct.
You can't enter on Arbor Road and then.
Well, I mean, you can, it's just an inaccessible route. If somebody wants to walk down the street, they certainly could could actually prevent you from going in.
But you can't meet the grade of the first floor of the building or the lower level from that side.
No, I mean, part of, part of hiding all the parking below the building raises the first floor off. Okay, so we can't even, we're not even doing an entry from Highland to the building. Because the floor is upset of the, that means I need a ninety-four ramp.
Correct.
Which means I lose all the landscaping and probably don't do that.
So instead of entering from Arbor on the upper level, you you're going down even further on Cross Street.
It it's, I'm not going down further on Cross Street. That's.
But you have a, you basically have a ramp to get you down, so you're going down versus going up. I'm just trying to figure out the grading.
And I'm sorry, from from Highland to to. Um, Highland ad slopes down as you go from Arbor to Cross, which is something that that gravers, why that connection is that.
So there's, it's it's a longer ramp to go from Arbor to the first level than to go from, than to go from Cross to the lower level.
Correct.
Significantly longer.
So in terms of chart, speaking of like the transportation, the traffic lines, the project's expected to generate, this isn't net new, but. Um, this is the amount of traffic the project will produce, and the next slide we'll talk about what increases over existing conditions. Um, that that's fine. So in terms of these, the increase in traffic over existing conditions, the far left-hand columns as proposed medical office building. That's the amount of traffic the medical office building is going to generate. The middle column is the existing uses and then the far right is the net increase in traffic over the existing uses. So what you see is the um on a daily basis, the large number at the top is a is a, we call it a twenty-four hour number. It's the amount of traffic produced over the operational day for the site. So if the site is open twelve hours, it's almost traffic if it is during that time period. Um, so if you look at the top number, the daily over twenty-four hour basis, the medical office building generates about eighteen hundred vehicle trips. Two-way traffic. Um, the existing uses is six hundred and thirty-four, so the net increase over the operational day is one thousand one hundred and sixty-six. That's the number that gets added to twenty thousand. So that's daily on top of daily, so we will add one thousand one hundred and sixty-six vehicles to twenty thousand vehicles that are on the roadway today.
And what percentage of that is to and from one to uh one twenty-eight?
Fifty-four percent of that number is to of the project site.
That's how much happened, huh?
So you.
It's pretty, pretty, well, yeah, it's it's pretty close to that.
You raise an interesting point. What do you anticipate the hours of of operation will be in this medical office? Like from seven, eight in the morning until uh seven, eight at night or nine at night or?
I would think it'd be seven, seven.
Yeah, okay, so the eighteen hundred, it's, it's a twelve hour. It's really a twelve hour number during the day.
Right.
But it looks like it's mostly in the middle of the day, not during rush hour.
The bulk that's gonna happen during most time period, so the next two smaller numbers are that's during, yes, exactly. So it's a, the net increases, it's an additional hundred and one vehicles there in the morning rush hour. And in the evening, it's a hundred and sixty-eight during the evening dark hour.
Just for laypeople like myself, for example, that hundred and one number is, that's combined coming in.
So how many, have you been able to determine how many parking spaces a building will use? Not what the code, not what the zoning code requires, but how many parking spaces you will use.
I I'll take this as the architect because I'm always asking for more parking spaces for medical. I have to say, your zoning code right where I want it to be. The five spaces per thousand is the perfect target. Um, we can get it down to, you know, four faces per thousand, but most medical tenants wanna see that four and a half to five. That's the ideal number for for, and that way the doctor gets backed up or not. Coming hard down the street, there'll still be plenty of cars, that's a proportion that you guys have compared to many other towns.
We think you were reducing that. Do you have other questions?
Well, so so you had referenced one thousand one sixty-six is a number added to twenty thousand project under there. But that's one thousand one hundred and sixty-six focused in this one area, taking left turns.
Fifty-four percent is.
Fifty-four second left turns, forty-eight, forty-four, fifty-six percent second right turns. So but 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 it's, they're focused at that point, so it's, I mean, I know it it sounds like a small percentage.
Yeah, next slide.
It's gonna be fifty-fifty because those, those who are coming from the east are going to turn right. They go in.
Yeah.
And then they gotta turn left when they leave and vice versa if they're coming from the west.
Yeah, true, yeah, you're right, that's right, yeah.
And and so this this slide speaks to the dispersal of traffic, so and again, this whole idea of the dispersal between Arbor and Cross is important as well. Because the concentration you're mentioning, what we're trying to do is not have it all using just one street. So we're having it use both streets to be able to come in and go from the site. And it's concentrated along the frontage of the project, then when you get away from the project site, the numbers get smaller, cause people start turning off on some of the side streets.
I understand that, but that that's where referencing these only a small percentage of twenty thousand, that's when it starts to sound like it's not a big deal. Whereas where's when you focus on when when the actual project is.
Correct, at the driveway.
That's when it's actually a big deal.
The the concentration is at the driveways and that's why the critical things are queuing along those roadways. Can it, can it handle the queuing and does the queuing result in kind of gridlock within the project site, which has other impacts that relates to it? And so we've focused on that because that also relates to Putnam Street. And, you know, if we have. And, you know, if we have queuing that's upset, excessive on one street or the other street, of course, people start to look for alternative routes and, and we're sensitive to that. And that's why the project is designed to funnel, to have traffic dispersed between the two streets. And then ongoing discussion about how do we further limit options of using pot, potential options for people selecting using Putnam Street? And so that's something that we've been focusing on as well.
Your traffic study, I, I think identifies the queuing of between one to five.
Correct.
On Arbor and Cross. So it doesn't matter, it could be two cars on Cross and three on Arbor.
Correct.
So, um, what's the maximum capacity for queuing before you get into adverse impacts within the site?
So you could, no, you could, so you could double the queuing. You go to ten on both streets and actually go beyond ten before you start to wrap into the garage. And that's why the ability to come out the backside and then go to either one or the cross is important.
To have free flow.
To have free flow because you're not jamming up. If one street all of a sudden has a queue that gets back to the driveway, you can come out the back and then use Arbor Street.
So your capacity is, your capacity is a total of, uh, twenty, uh, car lengths.
On both, and then.
Is that a total of forty? Or is that ten to ten?
Let me get you an exact number because it, it's going to go the entire length of Arbor or Cross to the back of the site. Then it's going to wrap around the back of the site and get to the point where you're at the garage.
Right.
Access point. So I can get you an exact number, but I think it's probably ten, tens, twenty. And then I've got a wrapper on the back of the building. So I might be able to get another four or five in the back there. Um, and so it's substantially more than what we're predicting. But again, that's why we want to make sure you can disperse the traffic onto either one of those streets. So even if you double the queue that we're talking about.
Exactly.
Yes, exactly. Thank you for that.
Okay. Do you have more to present?
I just want to, just to skip right to the end. So we have a series of recommendations and these are probably, we have onsite recommendations which are included in the site plan. But in terms of the offsite recommendations, we have recommended the re-timing of the two traffic signals on either side of the project site to, um, increase the capacity essentially with the re-timing of those traffic signals, which we will do as a part of the project. Uh, we are able to offset the impact of the project. So the increase in delays and queuing at those intersections, we can offset through some re-timing of the traffic signals on either side.
So you're saying that some municipality and the state will allow you to time the traffic.
Correct. Do we apply for permit? So, so if the board is so inclined to grant an approval of the project, with that being a condition, it would be that, you know, subject to receipt of all necessary rights, permits and approvals, which is common course that they would grant.
Well, let's be realistic, the Muzzy project is then going to potentially apply as well. And their traffic is coming from Cool Street onto Highland Ave. Your street, your project, traffic is coming from, you know, the other part of Highland Ave to the same intersection. You're, you're going to want the light to be longer going this way. They're going to want the light longer going this way, correct?
We have to, we have to include their project in the re-timing. So when we're talking about the re-timing of that signal, depending, actually what will happen is it will depend upon which project ends up at there first.
Well, but, you know, eventually they're both going to.
Yeah. So what will end up happening is from the standpoint of municipality, it's a good insight. It's a good thing because the signal is going to get re-timed, let's say, when we come in to effectuate the traffic volumes at that time. And then when Muzzy comes in, makes the changes because they're going to be reconcoring the Cool Street intersection. They will then come in and re-time it to accommodate their project plus our traffic. So it, it's actually, it's a beneficial thing that that's going to happen because the whole idea is to adjust the signals to accommodate the traffic that's going through the intersection.
Well, I think we can all, I think we can all appreciate hitting a light that doesn't seem logical to us. And when you get there, changing, converting to something that is logical. I'm just saying there are two logical directions coming here and they, they're, they're both, they both can't happen.
No, they, they can. Yes, they can.
No, they're both, they're fighting each other.
They are, but the signal can be re-timed to accommodate both. And when, that's a part of why our analysis includes their project and the modifications they're making. So when we're speaking of re-timing the signal to address our impacts, it's, it's not just, it's our impacts added on top of the Muzzy Ford impacts. So that re-timing that we've analyzed is actually a re-timing seven years in the future that Muzzy Ford built and our project built. So all of those changes in the traffic patterns are, are in it.
I, I'm just, I'm just saying that the, the two projects are, are fighting each other. Which one, which one wants a longer light getting out of there, getting out of there, getting out of the site? That's all I'm saying. And I'm not sure, I'm not, I understand at that point in time, you can look at it to see what's going on for the traffic pattern at that point in time.
It's.
I'm just saying realistically, you know, it is possible that you can't do anything about it. That's all I'm saying. To just, to sit here and say that everything will be fine. These will just be timed and that's part of the project. As opposed to, this is what we have in place right now. Here it is, is the amount of traffic we're talking about, is the turns we're talking about, is the amount of parking that we're going on the site. The lights are what they are. You can, you can only, you can only do as best as you can. And I, I don't expect any miracles on those lights.
No, we've, we've analyzed, we've analyzed that condition.
Yeah, so as I was reading the materials, there was one thing that I thought of, and I think this is a good time, um, a, a good time to, to, um, raise this question. Because it, um, it was someplace where it said something about that if you're, if you're coming out of the project and you're turning left onto Highland Avenue, uh, the traffic lights at Webster and Gould will stop the flow coming towards you so that you'll have a space to, to make your left turn. Now, I've been at many intersections where, you know, I'm, I'm looking to my right, I'm looking to my right. The traffic's coming, the traffic's coming, the traffic's, ah, there's a break in traffic. I look to my left, I can't move because traffic's now coming from my left. And I wait and I wait and I wait. Now I look to my right and traffic's coming from my right. So when you're doing this timing, can you do this timing so that there is a, a break from both Webster and Gould? So that these cars will not have that kind of a, a situation where, you know, there's a break in traffic on one side, but not from the other at the same time? Are you able to time that?
We, we can. And that's done through coordination of the traffic signals. And so, so what you do is you time them such that when the side streets are going and basically you stop pile in traffic at both intersections, not necessarily at the same time. But with.
But close to each other.
Close to each other. So then what you do is you serve Webster Street and Hunting Gould at the same time at both intersections. So that what that does is other than turning traffic on those streets, there's nothing moving in the middle. So Highland gets broken up. The changeover from Highland traffic to either Hunting Gould or Webster creates that gap. So as long as that changeover and the timing happens at both intersections close to about the same time, it creates an artificial gap.
Yeah.
So you can, you can absolutely do that.
That's an important thing to plan. Um, you're going to get to Putnam Street and so I, that's a concern for me. So let's talk about Putnam Street.
So, so Putnam Street, what we've looked at is again, the dispersal of traffic is one of the ways to try to allow for traffic to use either streets so that we're not concentrating it on one. So we're hoping that by doing that, that alleviates some pressure, let's say, for forced over onto Cross. So that we don't have everything trying to get out that way and then the queuing become excessive at one street together. Um, we have recommended or suggested that there's some, what we can do is first off, the driveway, as you saw, the first driveway coming in and cross when we were talking about the crossing, that happens before a street intersection. So the traffic that is coming and going from the back of the site is the traffic that potentially is not using Arbor. It's going to come up and have a, you know, importantly, it's coming up to Highland. But that would be the traffic that would have the potential to potentially turn right, let's say, to head down Putnam Street to come out. So what we're suggesting is we have, we would provide signage on both Cross and Highland Streets to indicate that really Putnam Street, it's, it's not a through, it's really a sort of that residential neighborhood. It's not intended to be a throughway to get to Cross. Um, so that was the first thing that we're suggesting to take place. And then the second thing is the turn restriction sign. So if you're coming out of the back of the garage and you're heading towards Highland, there's a sign that says no left turn. Um, and then this, you know, at, at Putnam. Um, we can do the same thing for traffic if it's potentially coming off of Putnam, they say that you can't make a right-hand turn. Um, so that then all you would really be doing is heading back up to Highland. So these are just some initial thoughts that we put together to say, we are sensitive to it. We've designed a project to try to disperse traffic to either side. But these are other measures that we can choose to try to intercept the traffic that is on the backside of the project site. We're potentially bleeding out that way if we're heading towards Cross and would be going my Putnam Street.
So we want to protect the Putnam Street residents, being a traffic.
Correct. We have no interest and there's no reason for anyone going to this building to use that street. And so what we want to do is try to emphasize the fact that it is a, it's a residential street to serve that neighborhood and that it's not intended to be used to get to or from this building.
What happened on the Arbor Street side is, do we go through to Webster?
No, no.
No, it's blocked. So you, you were saying that you, I think I'm reading this right, that you would have a sign on Putnam Street. So you could not take a left turn onto Cross Street for that neighborhood, correct? Is that, is that what I'm reading?
Is, is, I'm sorry.
So you would have a sign on Putnam Street so that neighborhood couldn't take a left onto Cross Street? Is that what I'm?
No, it turns right. So it less.
This says, no left turn if you're exiting from Putnam Street to Cross Street.
Yeah.
That's just from.
Okay.
Cross Street.
Right. So the intent is not that.
Okay, the intent is the.
Do that. So I apologize.
Take a left on the Cross.
Exactly. Exactly. If anyone wants, you know, you know, obviously if a resident wants to come to the project site in Putnam, they could come out, they could turn left and then go into the garage. Right. So the intent is really just to try to get so that anyone coming to the site really can't get to the site if they're using Putnam Street. And then if you're exiting from the site, but you don't use Putnam Street to get to Highland Avenue.
That's why.
Yes. Right. So I'm sorry I had to run too long. I will. So thank you very much for your questions. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Chair. In the interest of time, should I start by asking, do you want to hear about stormwater utilities? Or is that, would you rather defer to DPW? And I can go through it. I just know you, we're running behind.
I, I appreciate that. Um, if I, I did, I did have a question about, uh, 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 the storm flow management. Did my colleague want to hear a full?
Yeah, I think it might be useful considering what we've had to storms lately.
Sure. Okay. Then let me, I'm starting to keep.
That'll be okay.
Uh, and I'll start probably by going right past this one, Colby. I think we've talked enough about Cross and Arbor and the driveway. Uh, so this is our stormwater management and topography plan here. Um, we start by saying the site has a comprehensive stormwater management system. It's been designed with the town and neighborhoods, um, stormwater bylaw and, and associated standards, which more or less match the MASTEP standards as well, though it's a little more stringent for, um, EPA and your, your town's MS four, uh, the municipal separate storms or, uh, regulations. We don't actually connect the town system, um, because topographically Highland is our high point and the site, everything's sloping off down towards the back of the site, uh, down towards that connecting driveway. And so we have no municipal connection. And so the site sits in a bit of a topographic bowl. Uh, so our management strategy relies heavily on infiltration. Um, there's infiltration on site today. We'll be providing even more infiltration on site tomorrow. Um, going to your point, Mr. Carter, just about going sizes and, um, and intensities we have. You know, we, we've modeled that, uh, proposed site based on what we anticipate coming there and being able to, to manage those, uh, those flows and volumes through infiltration.
What, what year storms are you anticipating?
So, yeah, so they're, um, the, our intent is to man, if, the way you look at it is matching existing versus proposed, right? And keeping the proposed to the same level, um, as existing. We're actually providing, um, enough infiltration volume to, and I have to go back. I'll check my own numbers here, but the, I believe the twenty-five-year storm is fully managed. Hundred-year storm is mostly managed with some overflow, um, but less overflow than what is there today. Uh, so we have, um, we have catchment set up on all along Arbor Street, along the frontage of Highland Ave. Uh, the whole building and the parking, all this is going down to those purple boxes that you see. Those are the below-grade systems. Those are two separate sets of types of systems. The, um, stuff inside the building is, uh, concrete chambers. And then the stuff that will be outside in driveways, your standard weight five C more often is, is the plastic chambers for infiltration. Uh, but this is significant, I don't have a number off, off top of my head, a significant, um, infiltration volume that, that's being proposed. Um, and then, Colby, if you want to go to the next one, just real quick, um, on general utilities, most of our utility connections are planned to come off Cross Street. Uh, we have waterline improvements that are going to have for that first section between Highland heading towards Putnam. The six-inch waterline today will likely have to upsize that. We're working with the DPW right now, um, to coordinate that, upsize that to an eight-inch line to, um, continue what's already an eight-inch line going down towards Putnam. Um, we'll be connecting that with made in the four, going to the building, eight inch, four inch. Gas is also coming off that side. Telecom will be coming off that side. Electric will be coming off that side. And so that's all the red, um, electric, yellow is gas, orange is telecom. The only one heading out to, uh, Highland would likely be sanitary sewer. That goes out that way today. Currently it goes out that way through pumps and a force main. Uh, because our building's up higher now, we'd be looking to connect through rapid out to Highland Avenue. And then the waterline that you see down the bottom of the page on Arbor Street is just to serve a new hydrant. It's actually, there's already a connection at Highland Ave with the stub coming to Arbor Street, but it's not used uh, as a water service, but we're extending that for a hydrant. And I would like to point out, um, one thing that was in the architectural plan that we actually, that we missed on here and I need to color it is, so you point to the bottom left where the generator would be going.
Yep.
Um, there should be a generator shown down that, um, that area of the site that I'll need to, uh, I'll need to add to the site plan.
I'm the next draft for us.
Okay. You want to mention what we get at three squares?
Oh, yes. So, sorry. So, um, there was a lot of, as part of that infiltration, uh, strategy as well, there was a lot of offsite water coming onto the property from Three Squares and actually the upstream neighbors as well. Um, there, they had a, a single infiltrating catch basin that was actually hard to find because it was so filled with silt, uh, that it wasn't working anymore. So you can actually see where it's been blowing down the hill where in larger storms, um, onto Arbor Street and then into the property. Uh, so we actually, um, I think we, uh, the applicant, uh, funded stormwater improvements on the Three Squares property very recently as part of a separate effort just to capture that water and van and take that sort of out of the flow that's coming onto the site to help manage that as well.
When is, how is that being addressed? It's not being addressed. Is that being addressed?
Yeah. It's, it's done. It's, it's in the stormwater report as, um, it's factored into the model. Uh, but the, the work itself, because it's on a different property that was coordinated to the DPW, um, through Tom Rider and his group.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, the numbers, the numbers of the mission, they will, um, board will be very fast. Shawnee Yola Smith, Brown, Tulane City Architecture. Um, and the, we need the green slide. Uh, so a, as was mentioned at the beginning of the project, we've significantly increased the green space. There's about almost a half acre.
Excuse me, one second. Uh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Uh, it, it, this microphone will pick up everything, so it's really difficult for people to be able to hear if they watch this a week from now with popcorn maybe, uh, or if they're listening at home as it is. So I'm going to ask people in the audience, if you want to speak, just to, to go into the hallways so we can, the microphone can correctly pick up. Uh, I return it back to you. Thank you. I'm sorry for the interruption.
No, no problem at all. So as, um, we've significantly increased the amount of green space and have about a half acre of open space overall on the project, a little bit under that. And, um, and about, uh, one and forty feet setback of the, of the green space on, along Highland. So there's a, as you can see just from the state, from this view, there's green space buffering on, on all sides of, of the project. Um, also modulating any difference in, in elevation. And that's, that's the other strategy that, that you'll see with the views. The retaining walls, the site retaining walls have all been kept under four feet in height. Um, and, and, you know, and really are planted, as you can see, in ways to, to knit the project into the landscape and work with the topography. We have, and again, you'll see this in the view, but we've included significant screening, um, along particularly along Cross Street, uh, where I, Jason, in front of the plaza, um, we'll, we'll have some significant shrub screening. We're also going to be working, um, doing some additional planting at the neighbor's property across the street from Arbor, where, where the stormwater improvements had happened, to do some, some planting and screening there, um, to, to help, help screen things from the neighbors. Um, and, and that's through, through conversations with.
That's a Three Squares building, basically.
There's some residential properties further down Arbor.
Yeah.
Is there anything being done to utilize any of that retention stormwater for the property itself, for all the gardens and trees and so forth?
Um, we, we are not planning that at this, at this moment, but we also are increasing the, um, the velocity, the, of the project through increasing the green space. And, and, um, in, actually on that light, we're also, we will be having, we will be irrigating the project, but we're trying to selecting plants that are a little low water demanding and.
Does it make, does it make, is there some, any logic, is there some logic in the fact that there's, there's going to be so much water retention size that could put from the building, put from the parking, that, that is utilized and then actually water the property? So.
Yeah, we can certainly consider that. Um, stormwater is, is harder to lie under the seventy-two hour drawdown requirement, but when it's there, um, to store it and, and use it, some of that, that is certainly be considered. We just can't, we can't use it as, um, as credit for stormwater retention. We'll still have the same amount of retention volume needed.
I appreciate that.
But certainly to try to reduce the irrigation book on demand. But certainly to try to reduce the irrigation book on demand.
So now I'm just going to actually quickly go around the, the, some of the slides John saw at the beginning. So a- as you can see with, with the slide, Highland is sloping down, there's the, um, cycle track along the, the street, the sidewalk. The sloping walkway as, as it was recognized, it's not a ramp, it's less than, you know, it's less than five percent. Um, uh, and industrial enhancement across to the plaza, um, across the roadway to the plaza. So that you can, you just at the top of the driveway. Okay, um, and then, and then the, this is the, a view of the plaza itself, it's about, um, twenty-five hundred square feet. Both for, you know, for, for. For patients and for workers in, in the building, but again, this will be screened from the neighboring property with, with planting along the edge, but, um, sort of. Uh, pretty flexible open space for, for you all, anyone, and then moving.
Well, how do you, how do you anticipate that being used, going to have like a cafe or, 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 or sandwich shop in the building? So who would be using that?
Employees on their lunch breaks, if someone's waiting for someone else to be in an appointment and they were waiting outside, they've just dropped them off and. Use that, so it's not a very.
Um, and then we haven't, we've sort of cut back some of the, the Arbor vibes here, so you can see the building, but that, that screening would continue, you can see. The terraces stepping up with, again, the planting screening along it as well as the, um, the transformer. And then planting along the building, planting within the parking, uh, the parking level itself, the tree planting, we raised up planters. And, uh, again, I'm just kind of flying around, that you've seen already, so on the right-hand side. Uh, on the right-hand side of Arbor Street is where we're, we're going to be planting additional trees. Can move to the next view. And then, again, this, the idea of these terrace steps, um, coming up with ornamental trees and then, and then, um, shrubs and then grasses. Um, ornamental grasses along, along the edge. And the same with the Highland, so this is, I think the, it's a, overall about more, more than forty feet of planting. Between the building and the street.
Is that terrace or slope? When I'm looking at that.
It's, it's.
Right there. No, there's no, the ground, the plant grass area right there.
It's slope. It's slope, it's, it's a confusing rendering, it looks a little bit too geometric, because it's not going to be one, it's not, not going to be rows of, of terraces. So, um, but it will have, it will have four different grasses that are planted into, into woven.
Leading up to the wall and then there's more plantings behind the wall.
Yeah, yeah.
Aesthetically very good. So the goal is ground cover, so you don't, very low maintenance.
Yeah. Exactly.
Thank you. Are there other, uh, because of your team I wanted to present?
Uh, no, we're gonna, I mean, I realize that we're probably close to the end of the hour that you wanted.
And we haven't even had, you know, uh, some other, um, foreign comments, so.
Yeah, we would just direct your attention, um, particularly to the memo from the design review board, uh, I've turned it probably very favor.
So, um, I'm gonna mention that i- in a moment, ordinarily, we would have an opportunity for foreign member comment. Tonight, we've had a lot of comments and questions throughout, which is what's kind of extended our, our time. Significantly beyond what I was, uh, anticipating, uh, nevertheless, I do, uh, for the record, will read in. Um, some of the, the, the staff comments that we have received into the record. Um, there have been some updates, so I'll, um, uh, I'll discuss that, uh, um. And then I think tonight, instead of a board, you know, and additional comments and questions from board members, given the late hour. I'd like to then immediately go into any comments and questions from, uh, from the community residents.
May I make one comment, because I think it's something that's, I'm finding to be missing in the packet.
Sure.
And I, I think we need a good locust plan. Um, the locust plans that have been provided, there's this nice, um, burial field plan, but it doesn't really identify all the streets. Um, in this packet, uh, there's a plan on SV one. Which is a listing of conditions, plan of land, and it just shows a few. Quite close into the second, second street, what I mean is, we need to, uh, a, a locust plan that goes from Bull Street to Webster. It shows all the roadways in that vicinity, so that we can really discuss the knowledge of it. I kept going to a, you know, just a real street plan at home, trying to understand it. And so I really hope you're providing that, Sean.
Thanks, Joel, um, so, I.
Yeah, that was the best one I could find, but it didn't.
That's right.
To me, go far enough.
So, from, do you guys have anything else, can I? So, um. We've received the following, uh, comments, uh, from town departments from the design review board of memo dated August eighth. Uh, the design review board noted that, uh, the red oak trees in the plaza, um, and, uh, and, uh. Uh, near the sidewalks can cause acorns to drop, hopefully those won't become.
Will we switch species?
You're right, very good, I'm switching to. Excellent, uh, I don't say excellent just because I'm a Canadian, but they're, they're superior to oaks in every way. That's what I thought, too, uh, the design review board approved the, uh, the building design and the exterior materials, noting the product's well-designed. Um, uh, we have an email from the, uh, police chief Schlittler, August fifteenth. Questioning the traffic impact of this site's approximate twelve hundred net new vehicle trips per day in the context of. Um, uh, Wolf Finch's, uh, uh, Highland Innovation Center at the old Muzzy site. As well as what impact carpooling will have on, uh, um, among, uh, as employees. Um, and then the safety of that left turn movement from the site onto Highland. And also what mitigation can, um, uh, restrict Putnam from becoming a cut-through street. On Highland Avenue, there was a response letter, uh, uh, from traffic engineer Jeff Dirt dated August thirty-one that, that. Uh, spoke to those issues, we don't have satisfaction yet in writing from the police chief. I'm sure that may come in the meantime, but that's currently outstanding, I'll mention that again. We have, um, uh, an email. We have an email from Assistant Public Health Director Tara Gurge, uh, dated August thirty with her usual comments that Evans knows well. Uh, relating to food, uh, safety, uh, demolition permits and pest control management. And I understand that you've already acknowledged that there is no food service, you know, in the buildings. Um, we have another, we have a letter from our town engineer, Tom Ryder, dated August thirty. Who mentioned, among other things, we're following, uh, additional comments. Uh, the water and sewer may have, uh, an additional permit requirement. Uh, in other words, additional co- uh, 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 term requirements from the water and sewer department. So, uh, he suggests a peer review, he suggests the board. A peer review to assess the proposed traffic mitigation and traffic command management program. Um, he speaks of two options for wastewater flow, and I'll have a question for you presently. Uh, option one is to construct, uh, a project, the second is, uh, uh, the second is. A feed of the town's, um, I and I program at a rate of eight dollars per gallon. Um, to be removed, I wasn't sure, Evans, is your client selected yet which option it would proceed with?
No, but we're probably gonna go with paying the fee.
Okay, uh, um. Thank you, um. And I, uh, I understand that, uh, uh, that, Mr. Moski, you've responded to a number of those, uh, comments as well. Um, uh, we have, uh, um, from our building commissioner, our new building commissioner. Um, uh, a letter dated August thirty-one. Uh, suggesting that the submitted plans are complying with the bylaw, that there were discrepancies noted on the table, uh, which we didn't really discuss, but on page three. And on page C three, uh, oh, one with respect to the setback in accessibility, but that's been covered off. We received a letter, a response letter dated August thirty-one from Daniel Burton clarifying the setback in accessibility. We received an email today from the building commissioner that he is satisfied. Uh, from our fire chief, Tom Conroy, we received an email dated August thirty requesting. More detail on the fire hydrant location and the fire department sprinkler intake connection, which I think was discussed tonight. Uh, we in fact have a response from the project engineer, uh, uh, from Mr. Moscow by emailing it on August thirty. Um, the, the board will want, uh, obviously updated response from the police chief that he's been satisfied. Um, and, uh, the, uh, the town engineer as well as, uh, the, uh, police commissioner. And the fi- and the fire chief, I didn't mention that, I thought I just did, but thanks for the, for that, Jean. Um, we've received, um, uh, one email from a resident town meeting member, Glenn Molno, dated August thirty-one. Uh, actually encouraging additional stories above the commercial use for residential use. Um, but I, I don't think that's contemplated at this time, um, I don't think it would be permitted by zone, or, from that, exactly. Um, uh, so I'm gonna, we're gonna hold our further board comments and questions at this time. Uh, if I, if I, I can, I'd like to bring up our, uh, a chair or two. For the public, so people can come and, and sit down right there, uh, Colby, I understand you want to be able to.
I can flip that. That we, um, stop the screen sharing and knowing that we might have to bring it up to answer a question, but just so people at home can be the conversation.
Sure. Thanks, Colby. So I'm gonna move back and forth between the room and Zoom. Um, uh, and just to lay the ground rules for our public comment. Uh, in order to maintain stability and order, uh, for the process, we ask you to please address your remarks through the chair. Um, we may not be able to answer all questions in the moment tonight. We'll ask staff to flag those questions and we have a bit of time tonight, which is gonna be tight. To address them and if not, to mark those questions, so we can return to them, uh, subsequently. Um, we, in an interest, you know, to get through as many people as possible to hear, and as many people, please keep your comments. Up to three minutes in length, if someone's already said something that you wanted to say, you can simply say, I concur with the previous speaker. That's just as effective, uh, um, for anyone unable to speak tonight. And for those at home, if you'd like to, uh, uh, email us comments, you can, our email address is planning. At Needham MA dot gov, I think that's right, is that right, Alex, she's shaking her head, Needham. At, planning at Needham MA dot gov, uh, and with that. I'm gonna call the first person online, uh, I see is Jennifer Yogle. Uh, if we can bring her over as a participant, that would be helpful. Jennifer, if you can hear us, um, we'll ask for your name and address. I can have a second to come over. Were we able to get Jennifer to come over, she hasn't accepted, so what I would like to do then, while Jennifer comes over, I. There was another gentleman in the back of the room, who is no longer here, I don't think, that he wanted, he raised his hand at the beginning. Uh, if he comes back.
Howard was his representative.
Please.
Thank you.
Is that, is that true?
Yes, I was in the back of the room and had some comments, uh, yes.
With a gentleman sitting right next to.
Yes, speak louder.
Oh, oh, okay, very good. So, uh, very good, if you could say your name.
My name is Howard Goldman, I'm an attorney at Goldman and Peas, I'm here on behalf of the Gateway Townhouse condominium. Uh, and, uh, and so the gateway was built approximately nineteen ninety-six. Uh, it's twelve units, and it's comprised of, uh, people with children. And so the, the, those unit owners and their residents, uh, and their guests are very concerned about the traffic. Think we heard from the traffic engineer, there's approximately eleven hundred, uh, new cars daily, uh, that would be passing through there. And the concern is, A, fully to have, uh, strong. Where, where is the condominium? Sure, so the location of the condominium, if you're looking on, uh, Highland is, is to your back. And you're looking at the development, the condominiums are to the right.
What's the address?
Uh, the address of the condominiums are, um. Uh. Six oh five dash six oh seven Highland Avenue, six oh five dash six oh seven Highland Ave, so it's to the right. Yes, it's to the, on the right side of Cross, so it's, it's a pretty, you know, congested, it's a very well-maintained area, but there's a lot of people, children. The concern is, is, is people passing through Putnam Street, the signage that was mentioned, it is pretty light. Uh, my experience, if people can avoid traffic, they will. Uh, and, and you'll hear, uh, if we have time tonight or, or subsequent hearings about some of the traffic that has already come through there. But the concern is when you're adding eleven hundred new cars daily, that the traffic will be significantly increased, so. A, we're concerned about the signage, and, and what's the enforcement mechanism? So if somebody cuts through, despite a sign that says, don't cut through, who do they call, uh, how do you enforce that? And we feel it's gonna be ongoing and, and that people will always opt to take a shortcut if it's possible. Two is that the cross street and Arborways are private ways, that is, they're, they're only partially. And so therefore, the, the, the folks who are bought the, the private way have to maintain it. So now with, with the increase of approximately eleven hundred new cars a day. That it's gonna be greater use on these private ways, so we would like to hear about the developers' contribution. Uh, to maintaining the roads, uh, whether it's capital repairs, uh, whether it's, it's, it's snow plowing in the winter and on and on. Uh, but I know we're, we're, we're pressed for time, I'm an attorney representing several, uh, of these unit owners, many of whom are here tonight. And so it might be helpful if the board can hear directly from them as well.
And if you'd like to, please email us, you know, you know, a list of your additional comments and, and questions that you have, so we can have that as a record as well.
Okay, certainly.
Thank you. Um, uh, we, I see that we have Jennifer Yogle, uh, Jennifer, if you could turn on your video. And take yourself off mute, please, and state your name and address for the record, that would be helpful.
Okay, can you hear me and see me now?
Yes, we can, thank you.
My name is Jennifer Yogle, I live at six twelve Highland Avenue, directly across the street from the condos. That the gentleman before me was just speaking about, I live in between Mills and Utica Street, which are very densely populated. Um, neighborhoods with lots of children, almost every home has one or two children. And they play in the streets, they ride their bikes, they are very active in these neighborhoods, and we are all very concerned for the safety of these children. Because cutting through these streets happens, we know it's going to, no matter what. A, angle or sign you say, don't take a left turn, no right turns allowed, it happens. And it happens all the time and at high speeds, so that's my number one concern, the second concern is. And we're all worried about this, is why is there not another access route out of that neighborhood? When you enter from Highland Avenue, why does it not come out somewhere else onto either Webster or, um. I, the name escapes me at the moment, down by the New Muzzy potential, um, project. Um, the second prod, uh, question that I have for medical. Buildings is, how is medical waste actually leaving these places? I saw that there was a, um, uh, an area where medic, where waste would be, but medical waste is a very. Um, sticky situation, because there, there are products that go sit outside and things get into the water, and. I don't know if you're all familiar with this storm that August eighth brought, but flooding has. Impacted this part of town in a way we've never seen before, which means that whatever. Garbage bins or storage will get wet and they will come into the roads, the streets, people's yards. It, it flows, so we're worried about the sewage systems, worry about waste removal, pests. Pests, P E S T S, there are pests that happen. It's, it's a wildlife preserve around here at night, I don't know if anybody has spent any time out here in this neighborhood. It's, it's a wildlife preserve around here at night. I don't know if anybody has spent any time out here in this neighborhood at night, but there are wild animals and things that get into the trash and drag your trash out into the road and to the side streets, into driveways and things like that. Um, so between the water and the waste removal and the traffic, we as neighbors here in this area are very concerned about the safety and, um, I, I understand and I appreciate that people have walked up and down the street and they've measured cars and traffic and things like that. But they've never tried to get out of their driveways at seven thirty or eight o'clock in the morning to get onto Highland Avenue because nobody lets you in or out of your street, into your driveway, into the street. Which means people that actually live along Highland Avenue and on the side streets have a very hard narrow window to actually access Highland Avenue. So that applies to buses, school buses, uh, people leaving for work and, um, people that need to access our homes, you know, surface people and things that they can't actually get into our properties and off the streets. So I think that this project personally from my end needs a little more work on the road systems and the access, a safer and, and a better access out of the building and out of the property and onto and out behind. What about behind Wing Gate? Is there another road access out there? I mean, the, if you went in one way and, and entered and exited another, that would, that would remove fifty percent of the rows and of the cars entering and exiting Highland Avenue.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, does anyone else in the room like to speak?
Very much.
Thank you. Thank you, committee.
So appreciate.
I'm a wall tenant. I am a trustee for the Gateway Townhouse Condominium Association, of which there are twelve units. I am also here to back up the comments that Howard has made and a couple of, uh, we've heard other comments. The biggest problem I see is that, and I don't know whether you've all been or had an opportunity to go down, but the width of the streets is my biggest problem. We have no sidewalks. And we don't anticipate putting in sidewalks because we're in the paying for all services in the, on the streets. And the kids are the real issue. We've got six families that have children. There's eighteen units in that block area in total, including the Putnam Street side. And I think this is a big concern of ours. Especially being a private way, we pay for all expenses within the two streets being Highland and Putnam. And the rest of the items were, I think, were taken care of and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I see another hand, uh, online, uh, Dr. Wendy Harmon. Bring her over.
Hi.
Can I hear you? Oh, now we can. Perfect.
How are you?
Good thing. So if you could say your name and address for the record, please, that would be helpful.
Great. Um, I'm Wendy Herman. I live at six one three Highland Avenue. I'm in the Gateway Condominiums. Um, I just moved here. I have two small children. Uh, my son attends Elliott Elementary and his bus stop is at the intersection of Cross Street and Highland Avenue. Um, we, we know that it is already a very busy street. Um, as a first grader, he is allowed to be, uh, picked up and dropped off from that bus stop independently. Um, we are probably not gonna do that anytime soon. However, I'm very concerned about the safety of that bus stop if there's going to be active digging, paving, demolition at the intersection of Highland Avenue and Cross Street. Um, I, I, you know, his safety is very important to us. Um, we would like to preserve the availability of that area as a bus stop um, and also, uh, ensure the safety of that area as a bus stop.
Thank you.
Can somebody speak to the question of during construction? How, how will it impact intersection of Cross and Highland?
Sure. Would like to take that question.
I'm big, we already connected. I'll try.
Maybe next time. Yeah, you know. Because I'm sure we're going to continue. Yeah. So, uh, the question is there and I'd like to hear an answer is, because she raised the question about whether the construction will cause construction on Cross Street, which will affect the ability of the school bus and the school children to have safe access at that.
So.
So, let me, let me just suggest then, in the interest of time and because we don't have a construction manager.
Yeah.
That we just, we'll just plan to respond to that.
That's what I mean.
Here you will be. We'll respond to it.
And, you know, and you could probably speak and reach out to the, uh, uh, the school department. Um, uh, the education department, speak out of the superintendent's office, you know, and or they have their own transportation uh, ahead. Um, Alex and me might be able to.
Uh, that may be pretty true.
Well, you know, at least to be.
Let's find out what, yeah, construction. The anticipated construction.
That's helpful. Thank you very much. Do you have anything else, Dr. Herman?
Um, no, that was, that's my biggest concern with this construction.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the room? Uh, Rob came up first. So Rob, if you could come to the table with your name and address, that would be helpful. And I see there's a couple more hands, so we'll come to you both as well.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Mr. Chair. Uh, Rob Dangle, twenty-eight, you with Circle and Needham. Um, I'm in the Heights as well. Um, while this project doesn't impact me as much as it does the condominium owners that have bought the property, I feel very badly for what they're about to be put through with uh, Muzzy Construction eventually. Um, with Wing Gate and now with this, they're gonna be sandwiched and they're, they're kinda getting a, a certain type of sandwich from both sides and you know, I, I think some consideration on the overall size of this project really needs to be taken into account. Do we need a fifty thousand square, fifty thousand square foot medical building so close to the street? So close to residential neighborhoods on a street that is super narrow that can't handle, in my opinion, and not a traffic engineer, eighteen hundred cars a day? Um, with all the other projects that were kind of lining up for this, so I personally feel like this project should be scaled back a bit. You know, just on traffic alone. That's just my opinion. Um, as far as the design of the building and the project overall, I've heard nothing, uh, about solar. I mean, I obviously has brought that up in the past with other projects. Um, is there any attempt to make this a lead certified building like the Muzzy developers, um, or eight eighty-one Highland, we're gonna call it, um. We're doing anything about lead certification or asking developers or are the developers willing to do that? Uh, I think that's gonna contribute to kind of our vision for Needham and for some of the goals that we want to, we want to achieve, uh, longer term. Um, just from an aesthetic perspective, it seems like a pretty nondescript rectangular silver building that really does not contribute to the character of Needham. Um, so I, I would like personally to see some, some, a little bit more thought into the design. I, I know that when we were talking to the developers of the Muzzy site, they, they took a really um, big effort to focus on the aesthetics. I, I don't feel like this building is kind of like, i- is even making the attempt to do that. And that's not to insult the all, the developers or the designers of this building. I just think that maybe a little bit more consideration to the neighborhood we're trying to shoehorn this into is, uh, is, is taking into consideration. And then obviously the traffic impacts, I think I mentioned that, uh, before, so. Think about the neighbors and think about the, the kids and, and the folks that live in those condos. I, I would not want to be that. Thank you.
Not really a comment, but kind of a direction for our department that I would like them to follow through on some of it. Because my question is, um, what we have is a project that, um, uh, i- is a use as a right. That meets all of the zoning requirements. We're totally on site plan review.
Yes.
And so my question that I think we have to, probably have to ask Chris Hee, our town council, is can we on site plan review raise these issues and require these issues such as solar? Um, I forget what other.
We, I, I can answer that.
Rob, Rob, men- men- mentioned, but they, they may not. We could do it with Muzzy because that was a special permit process. When you're on a special permit process for use, we can have a lot more conditioning than we can on site plan review. And so I'd like, I'd like to get an answer from town council as to whether the.
I can speak to this. I, this, you raised this question before and I, uh, spoke to town council. Specifically on, specifically on, on the, on solar.
You're, you're holding back from me.
And on, and.
I say that shittingly for the record.
Yeah, and as you're saying, and it's clear that under site plan authority, the planning board does not have the authority to require, uh, you know, the developer to, um, any developer to install solar panels, make it all solar, do geothermal or any other carbon reduction technology. We don't have that, we don't have that authority. Uh, we can't restrict it. Uh, um, we can't prohibit it, but we also can't, we don't have the authority to require it. No matter, regardless of what the goal, future goals are of the town.
I get that.
And, uh, and we, and under site plan authority, we don't have the discretion to require a developer to, you know, to reduce the size of the building by twenty-five percent or ten percent. We don't have that. So I understand that as a resident, you know, you're making a comment and maybe on their own, th- they might do that, but you kind of asked it through the planning board, can we do that? And as Paul was speaking to, to that bigger question, the answer is for the record that we, we don't have that authority much as perhaps we would like to. Where it's a site plan review, we don't have the, we don't have the legal authority to, um, uh, to make those requirements. The developer does have a requirement to, um, to mitigate the impacts to ensure that it's not in a, a worse state after, you know, post construct, post construction. That's why storm management is meant to uh, be taken care of and treated, uh, uh, storm i- is taken care of on site. And, uh, and that there are certain standards in traffic mitigation that are required to effectively meet. And I'm sure they're suggesting that they've met those standards and we have a conversation about that momentarily, but that's the element of our authority. Lee, did you want to add any other?
No, I think I think I covered it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
It's just to add on to that. I mean, I understand that you guys are limiting your authority and they can do it as of right and all that stuff, but this is our mouthpiece as a resident so that you understand that, that some of some of the, the, the common folk, um, you know, the things that are important to us, right? And folks are residents as well and you understand, um, doesn't, just because the developer isn't required to do it by law, we should look at the zoning. Because I, I don't know when the zoning was changed. I'd like to understand that. A lot of people have asked me when the zoning was changed. Um, so that, how can we with some of these projects have a little more power in, in how design was done?
In the solar and how we are, right?
So, so we, we are in the process. Thanks, Paul.
Yeah.
I don't get too far in the weeds about planning policy. It's almost nine o'clock. We still have a robust agenda ahead of us. There are two people on, online that want to speak and there are two other people here that want to speak.
We should just.
But specifically.
Just do one minimum.
I, you know, where we'd like to encourage developers to do that. The develop, it's up to the developer how they wish to apply and what comments and feedback they take from us. There are some they're required to take. There's some that's, you know, that they may or may not take. But we, we do have a plan and we're gonna speak about it tonight to, uh, identify specific bylaw change for, uh, um, solar energy and, and similar technology, which we hope to take to town meeting in May. Um, so that's, and stay tuned for that.
We, we just want to feel like developers care about the neighborhoods they're building into.
Sure.
Then have, you know, have some skin to stick. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, online, uh, I see, uh, David, I, I'm sorry, my eyesight.
Horuska.
Thank you, Horuska. David, we're gonna bring you over.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
We can. David, if you can say your name and address for the record, that would be helpful.
Absolutely. Yeah. David Rushka, twenty-one Rosemary Street. Uh, I think it's a nice redevelopment overall here. My, my main question, uh, and concern is just about the, the parking. Uh, particularly what the, the cost would be charged for, uh, users of the site to park there. Um, I'm going to assume, be- because it wasn't discussed, that the parking is planned to be free. And, you know.
Yes.
I, I think we've learned over, you know, past several decades that free parking is, 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 you know, not an optimal public policy in terms of the external costs that it imposes on society. Uh, you have a developer that's spending a lot of money to build a very expensive garage and that acts as a subsidy to vehicle owners who are going to create congestion and crashes and pollution in the environment. And users of other transit modes aren't going to benefit from all this, uh, expense that's put into the parking. So it's very much a vehicle centric, uh, development here. Uh, you can see that based on the plan and how much of the discussion is about vehicles. Um, we've heard a lot of concerns about traffic and really trying to provide more access, trying to provide, uh, more convenient means for vehicles to get around just makes it more convenient and more likely there'll be more vehicle traffic. So I'd really encourage the planning board, I'd encourage the applicant to reduce the parking as much as possible, to charge, uh, a market rate to discourage driving and to look at improving access for other modalities. Uh, I think you, you get what you plan for. If you plan for vehicles, if you plan for traffic, that's what you get. So I, I'd really encourage, you know, looking at, uh, planning for the future and, and looking at how we can get away from our dependence on, uh, vehicles. So I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, David. Um, there were two other people in the room that wished to speak. I'm gonna, uh, your, her hand was up, I think, a second before yours. So I'm gonna have you, if you could come to the, uh, table, please. Thank you very much. If you could say your name and address for the record.
Okay. Hi, my name is Nancy Freewall. I live at six fifteen Highland Avenue. I'm also a trustee of the Gateway Townhouse's condominium. I'd like to reiterate that I agree with most of what has been said by the speakers. I want to remind everybody that Putnam Street is a private street. And I thought maybe the town could help us out by putting maybe a sign that says no access to Highland and ninety-five, because you have that unhunting installation which helps prevent traffic going down those side streets. And also maybe add a dead end sign to that, um, also. I think this parking for two hundred and fifty cars is too many cars for the side streets. Uh, for Cross Street is a short street. It's not a long street. And also the other side, I think it's just too many cars, too much parking for the development. Also, I have problems getting out of my driveway during certain times during the day because of the traffic light at Webster and Highland. The traffic gets backed up on Highland all the way to my driveway at six fifteen Highland Avenue and I cannot get out. So what's gonna happen when we add two hundred and fifty cars of parking at this new proposed development? Another consideration for the board that I would like to present is I don't think the hours of the medical office billing should be from seven AM to seven PM. I don't know of other medical office billings and Needham having that like closing and I, there are homes in the area and so I'd like the board to consider, uh, proposing maybe, uh, the last doctor's appointment at four thirty in the afternoon, something like that. Because most doctor offices are not open till seven at night and I don't think they should be at this development. I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Online, I see we have, uh, Emily Pick. We're gonna try and bring you over as a speaker. You're in the dark, Emily, but.
Well, I'm not. Thank, thank you, um, uh, for, for, um, giving me the floor. Um, like many of the, I, I live, first of all, I'm Emily Pick. I live at twelve Mills Road, which is just across from, from Cross Street. Um, and my largest concern about this project is, is traffic. Um, and I, I'm very concerned that this project is gonna be railroaded through. I hope that the planning board is going to hear the concerns that they've already heard from many of the residents, um, in the, the, the. The condos across the street from us, um as well as on the residents who live on Highland Ave, that traffic is the biggest concern here. I'd like to see um this pushed back off of Highland Ave. I'd also like to see additional traffic dispersion. Um I'd like to see um additional uh measures put in place for water runoff. Um to the point that uh the first speaker Jennifer uh made at at the start of this, there's. Uh since the remodeling of Highland Avenue in the past five years, there's been increased water coming down Mills Road, not less. Um and despite our pleas uh for for water management, um we still have terrible water coming down Mills Road. Um as a result of the work that was done. Um I'd also uh to the previous speaker's comments. Uh like the hours of operation addressed, um because I I know the realities of medicine. They want more traffic in these buildings, not less. Um if each doctor is seeing. Anywhere upwards of twenty patients a day, that that's going to only increase the traffic to this building. Um and uh that it it curtailing the hours of operation would somewhat minimize. Uh the the traffic um in in our residential neighborhood. Um I also would like some kind of insurance placed on on Mills Road. Um because as it is, we're a cut through um and no mitigation was put in place during uh the Muzzy. Well, let's call it the Muzzy debacle um for Mills Road to protect us, to protect our kids that play in the street. Um there are dozens of kids in this on on Mills Road alone, notwithstanding Utica and Davenport Road. So I I would like to see um safety measures, um some kind of, some kind of a mechanism put in place. So people can't shoot across Cro- Cross Street through Highland Ave, down Mills Road and down to Sacum. Um we can't add to the traffic on Mills Road. Um I'd like, and I'd also like to see some method of enforcement. Um Highland Ave has become a highway. Um on nights, weekends and even during business hours. Um and I don't see any police presence at this point managing uh the rate of speed that people come down, come hurling down Highland Ave. So I'd like to see um increased uh attention to that. Um and I'd also like to see um the hours of construction minimized. Because the this entire neighborhood is being torn torn up due to due to due to ongoing construction projects uh at Muzzy. Uh and elsewhere. So uh those are just a few of my concerns. Um much of them have have already been summarized. But I I'm very concerned about the scale of this project and what it's going to continue to do to our residential neighborhood.
Thank you, Emily.
Yeah.
Uh there's a gentleman in the back of the room. Uh if you'd like to come to the table, please. Right. All right, you can say your name and address.
One nine four Webster, Kevin Piketty. Um I could say, I'm trying to clarify the traffic. Is it one car out of each oven in Cross Street per minute at high at peak hours? There's five cars, I thought.
That was a que- that was a queue.
Okay, so there's eleven hundred more vehicles. Am I right about that?
Yeah, of course.
So during peak hours, you'd be getting how many, say at one o'clock in the afternoon, you'd get sixty more out of each street? In and out? Am I thinking about this right?
Yes, running during so.
Please, if you can, yeah.
So we're estimating sort of project in the morning, when our period will be a lot a hundred. It's in and out.
Right.
Let's roughly could say half.
So an appointment might last forty five minutes. So then you have.
Yeah, so you could, you could say it's a, if it's a hundred and, just call it a hundred and twenty. You could say sixty vehicles. During the hour, we use each of those streets roughly about half. That would be.
And then you determine during eight hours or ten hours that you get to the twelve hundred.
Exactly. The operational bit, yes, of the twelve hours.
So yeah, my other questions relate to the elevation change between Cross and Arbor. Um this, there's a considerable drop on both. Arbor is more stretched out than Cross. Um so I, I'm not sure how that actually is gonna work. But I take it you cut and fill to stretch, turn things out.
Mr. Ruska, do you want to address that?
Yeah, so.
Well, the Arbor Street is progress.
Yeah. Correct. Cross Street comes down a little bit quicker. Um Arbor Street comes through a little bit higher elevation than Cross Street. They, it starts higher and it ends higher um than Cross.
Right. Well, you said you had, if it's lower, that would be equal.
So that's why we're doing that connecting driveway between the two, the Arbor Street. By the time you get down Arbor Street towards the end, where your driveway would then be there, it comes, if that connecting road continues.
Do you make a hard right hand?
You make a right hand turn and continue coming down towards that entrance there to the lower level of the.
So the line that I, what, there's six old growth oak trees on the left side of Arbor. They are remote, because one is questionable and Bartlett looked at it.
Yeah, you were part of that, that, yes, we did have Bartlett take a look at the trees. Um they made recommendations on on tree health. Um our plan is to.
One, one was small.
Yeah, if one, yeah, if one was um.
Okay, so when you, when you start talking about the landscape issue, I I wasn't sure where that line actually falls.
Yeah.
So so my concern is old growth oak trees, store store garden and all of this stuff. Um I just wondered about that, because on Cross Street, we've got two that are quite older. And I wasn't sure where they're gonna fall, the bottom right of Cross. So how that approach comes in.
The bottom right being on the opposite side.
As you pass partner, there's two very old.
If they're on the opposite side of the street, we would not.
So your 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 approach can work there too. So, okay, so your property line. Yes, I actually do work for the people in the back. Um but I do live on Wednesday and I get to walk to work. So I'm always, it's the plus and minus of the rail trail and all of the things that are in the future. All right, I I that, I understand the traffic management and the going and coming. Um it's uh it's congested in the morning. But I usually leave earlier, so I don't see necessarily eight o'clock or nine o'clock. Um but all right. I I think that answered more or less, and I'll be back to the next meeting.
Thanks, Kevin. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Uh we, I see. Is there anyone else in the room that wanted to speak at this time? So we have one more person online uh with her hand up at this hour. Uh Mister Ben Daniels, if we could bring uh Ben over, please, and then that will be, I think, the end of this session. Uh. Is that okay with the board?
Yes.
Good, okay. Ben, we can see you.
You hear me?
Yeah, name and address for the record, please.
Ben Daniels, five Satcham Road, um directly across the street from where the old Muzzy Ford is. My my comments are about traffic. Um first, I have one other comment after that. It's it. Mainly about the overall traffic and I guess it's sort of like, where does this all end? A lot of us objected. To a lot of when the Muzzy Ford project was going down, about the size of it. It's kind of over our objections aboard approved that we thought it should have been scaled back quite a bit more than it was. That was a special permit project. Um this one, we, I, we know, understand this one isn't, but the concern is that, you know, where does this end? You know, this one's eleven hundred more cars a day. That one was, I don't remember how many more cars a day. There's a lot of other parcels of property. That either by right or the owners are going to be looking at and saying, gee, if I could get some special dispensation. Look at how much more valuable my property would be. Look at how much more valuable Muzzy was because of the change in zoning. I mean, I think, you know, the difference was tens of millions of dollars. Other people are looking at that. They're gonna look at this property. They're gonna look at other properties. Avery Manor, I know, is looking for something. There's other places along here. I mean, when does it end? You know, what does this turn into? And, you know, eleven hundred cars here, eighteen hundred cars here, a thousand cars there. Another thing there, pretty soon you're not at a thousand, you're ten thousand cars a day. You know, where do these roads go? That, you know, is this thing gonna be backed up from the center of town to one twenty eight? Um, you know, for hours that, you know, at a time. I mean, it's just, I guess, it's it's the frustration is that, you know, every time it's a little bit, it's drip, drip, drip. With a few more cars, a few more cars, and and it's like, there's no like overall plan. You know, it's even hearing the back and forth on on the streetlights. Well, we'll adjust it for this one. And I even heard the comment, well, it's like whoever gets there first. You know, it it's, it's, this is not general foresters. Whoever gets the battle, the firstest with the mostest wins the battle. There has to be a plan. It's not whoever gets there first and adjusts the traffic lights between Muzzy and between this. Someone else will want the traffic lights adjusted in their favor. I I guess it's the, it's the feeling that there, there needs to be some kind of an overall plan. And the planning board is kind of where that needs to happen. Where the thought about, you know, what is the traffic situation gonna be? And then I look at at Highland Ave and. And and I see these, these lovely bicycle lanes that they built that nobody uses, that somebody from the state decided were a good idea. To placate a small vocal, very vocal, very small group of people that like these bicycle lanes. That I repeat, nobody uses. Instead of saying, you know, gee, there's thousands and thousands of cars and zero bicycles that use these things. Maybe we oughta just say, you know, thank you for the thought, but we need to build roads for cars and. And, you know, maybe make Highland Ave more usable for the cars. They didn't do that. That ship seems to have sailed. Maybe that was a ship that Needham couldn't control. But again, you know, it's, I kind of see a ship without a captain sailing along here. And, you know, and cars just increasing and increasing. So, you know, I guess that's just my comment that. You know, I I would kind of like to think that somebody was here, planning board, keeping an eye on, making sure that Needham doesn't turn into Somerville. And that we don't have this highway of of Highland Ave. And it's, you know, it, there's a finite number of cars that it can, that it can handle. And that someone is thinking about it because, you know, the cars, they do cut through the neighborhoods. And then, by the way, this, the comment on someone about that sign on Saint, on David Road, unfortunately, it doesn't work to keep people out. Because the GPS says you can cut through and it's open. People don't pay attention to the signs. And one, one last comment directed towards the developers for this project. While Needham cannot force you to put in solar or geothermal, you can put it in as a matter of goodwill towards the town. So, you know, no one has to force you to do the right thing. If you'd like to put in solar, if you'd like to put in geothermal, I know there are a lot of people in Needham that would think well of you for doing it. That's just my comment.
Thank you, Ben. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I. Okay, last.
This will be last. And and it's just kind of a recap. Alan Friedman, seventy one Putnam Street. Like this gentleman said, and and all the other folks that spoke regarding gateway. We can put up signs, it, they're not gonna matter at all. And that's a private way. And as Walter mentioned, when we moved in here, I don't know, twenty six years ago, there were no kids. Now there's lots of kids. That's a problem. And for us to think that putting up a sign is gonna. You know, put cars going in a different direction, I think we're foolish. And the other thing is, the impact that we're having with this development, Wing Gate and Muzzy Ford. I think as planners, you've got to space these out. It, I mean, we live there. The whole community lives there. And and I think that you, you know, you represent us, the residents, and for you to just okay these and they just, you know, go in line. It's not fair to the people that live here. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I. Artie or Natasha, do you have any other comments at this time?
No.
Okay, so. Um. I think that uh some of the next steps, we we have, first of all, I think we have to resolve and make a decision as a board. We want a peer review on the traffic uh impact analysis.
Well, we often do ask for the peer review, um and our staff is seeking it. Um I took the traffic report and and read the summary. Uh I'm not an engineer to go through the report and and try to understand every single thing. And that's what a peer review is about. Um I don't know how costly it is.
I want to hear the other comments. I I have made up my mind about whether we should be asking for the.
So to be clear, this has come to us from our.
Yes.
Our town, uh requested by our town engineer. Artie and Natasha, do you have comments on that?
I would say, I mean. Traffic is obviously the the main focal point. I have a couple of other focal points, but that's a main focal point. I think it's would be very wise to have a peer review.
Think if our town enge- our town engineer would do it or would it be through?
No.
Well, the town engineer is requesting it.
Is requesting it.
So it would probably be through GPI, um that has a contract with town.
I I think we should do it just because, again, I I'm hearing about all these projects happening in the same area of town. Um it feels like it's. The responsible thing to do.
So I, on that specific point, the uh town engineer did identify that Vanessa's traffic study did include. And affirm that um their traffic impact study did include the traffic created by Muzzy at full development. But having said that, I.
Um. Well, keep and can keep in mind, I mean, that's what peer reviews for though, to make sure things are done accurately. Is it, is it accurate? Is it, is it really the full summary? So I know it was said.
There's certainly multiple.
Peer reviews to make sure, make sure what we're seeing is.
Yeah, I I I'm in favor of peer review. Um it it's. Um. Vanessa represents a developer. And so. They do good work, we've seen there in reports before. Uh they represent the developer, they're giving the developer's point of view, whether it's intentional or just that's the way people work. Um I I I I think having another set of professional eyes looking at it was a good idea.
So. This is not a small project. To Artie's point of traffic, a peer review doesn't just, I ju- doesn't just validate the calc-. The mathematical calculations, it also does assess the mitigation proposed, evaluate it. Not just validate it, but suggest from time to time some additional suggestions, which really, under the scope of the project. Are beyond the scope of our own town engineer. So I think who the board has to rely on for any additional suggestions or comments for improvements, if if there are any. So uh to that end, I'd ask the need to reach out to uh to GPI, they are available.
Um. I I think I, what I would need is a motion.
Yes.
Request a a a traffic study peer review on this project and direct me to engage a consultant for that purpose.
So moved.
Can I have a second? We have a motion by Artie, a second by Paul. Any discussion?
Yes, I have a question also.
Okay, uh Jean, I'm gonna come to you in one second. Natasha hit the buzzer first.
I did.
You did.
Sorry, Jean. Um quick question. I know we're doing some type of traffic study for the town somewhere. Were we doing one? And what does that encompass? Is this part of it?
That was a parking study.
That was a parking study.
So it was not a traffic study. Okay. I just wanted to make sure we weren't duplicating efforts for something that we were already doing. Okay.
Jean.
Uh we'll pay for it, us, the town.
Why not?
Um uh I'll work with um DPI, come up with a scope of work. Um they'll give us a a proposal and a cost. Um and then the developer will be asked to fund it. Um and um just thinking about timelines. Um it would be nice to have this for continued hearing, which I'm assuming would be on October the third. Which means um we need to get this uh resolved probably this week or the beginning of next week if we're gonna meet that schedule and have a peer review done for that meeting.
And also by that meeting, if. It, uh, you know, if we can get satisfaction between the fire department, the police department and the town engineer. On any of the other outstanding items, then we'd be able to have another round of public comment, board comment. Review of what's been satisfied. Hopefully, nothing else would be outstanding. And then we'll probably realistically need another meeting to resolve any um. You know, traffic suggestions that we may have or any other comments that we may have for final. You know, I think it's roughly here we're at. So um uh we have, we had discussion.
Actually, like, personally, there was the peer review, is it going to be looking at the reports slash data presented to us?
Yes.
And is it going to be seeking others, seeking their own data at all?
It's gonna be reviewing the data that they've provided and telling us whether or not it's adequate, whether they agree with its conclusions. And whether or not, or if if there's a. And whether or not, or if, if there's additional information that they would suggest needs to be provided.
And their method all, and their method all.
Yeah, so yes, they're not going, they're not going to go and track Highland app to see what their numbers are or anything like that.
I think they'll, they'll look at the data that we've gotten and tell us whether or not they feel it's adequate and sufficient.
I would like to stress with. Who I would choose in the year review, that we have a major concern about, um, all. Traffic on, uh, we small side streets. That are already in this area. Mill Street, Satrum Road, Davenport. Here and, and, and how, how that could possibly be mitigated.
Sure. So we have, we have a motion, a second, we have a, uh, we've had discussions. Any other comment on them specifically the motion itself? Hearing that will come to the vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, uh, we've unanimously approved, uh, moving forward with a, a peer review. Um, so I look to you, Evans, to confirm if October three. We continue to October three is the next session. The hearing. And Lee, while she's doing that, what else is on our agenda?
Uh, housing authority is coming in that night.
Okay.
So I'm just hearing first, so.
I don't, uh. Okay, so.
Um, I, I would ask me Anna, why do this first? What, which will be seven o'clock? Or you want to the housing authority first?
I would say let's do, I guess, let's do this at seven.
Do we continue the hearing to October third?
We have a motion. Well, let's just go right into seven.
Oh, no, but you, you know, we can, we'd never get started exactly at seven o'clock for the hearings. And so, you know, seven oh five, seven ten. Seven oh five.
All right. We have a motion to continue to seven oh five on October three. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Jean, any discussion? Hearing that will come to the vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, uh, we've unanimously continued the hearing to October three at, uh, seven oh five. Thank you. I declare this Adam Spencer for leaving. So what I thought to do actually now for the word. Is, uh, thank you all for coming in, by the way. And, uh, it's good to see everyone else in the room as well. We look forward to additional comments to come.
If you need, if you don't need me, continue if you need me.
It's sour. So what I, what I would like to do basically is to hang out a few of the other items on our agenda and then reserve the last for zoning. Okay, is that okay? In which case Alex, I think you're. Uh, I think we can take a break and then.
So we weren't able to, if you continue to ask questions on this.
I wish.
Um, um, this one because we wanted the community's input.
We're, we're done.
I understand. So. Send an email if people have some concerns or issues.
No, 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 we're gonna, so at our next session, we'll have an opportunity. The order of operation was for the next, uh, for the next session. We'll review what's. Whether the, everyone else is not satisfied. Actually, the other items. Then, uh, and probably do public.
They can't do that. They can't learn so much until.
Just to be clear, Paul, we're not, we're not recessed. I don't know. She was asking questions directly related to that, so. So. And then, uh, then we would have an update on the traffic. And then hear from the public again. In the meantime, there, you know, the public.
We have any comments? We have to wait two weeks, we have to wait a month?
Yeah.
To send them?
Yeah. So the next item on our agenda was, uh, uh, discussions of climate action.
I mean, then they have a month, they would be a waste of time if I have something major. For a whole month.
Well, that's why there was no opportunity.
We did, but then you said we couldn't, you said we've already all talked. Now the. The, uh, the community is going to talk, so we can hit, which is right. I'm just saying, I'm okay with it.
We're gonna have a third meeting of the.
Well, potentially. We can chat offline. I just want to continue with.
Go ahead, sorry, I just.
So. So the next item on our agenda was to deal with us, our, uh, climate smart, uh, zoning initiative. But I'm going to put a pin in that. And I'd like to deal with, um, uh, the other items, uh, first. So the next item is the Board of Appeals, uh, for September twenty-one. Uh, this relates to a special permit, um, uh, to waive parking requirements for the, uh, Choban. Bedet School to the temporary location at fourteen fifty-eight Gray Plain. While the, um, permanent operation at seventy-two school undergoes, uh, pre-approved renovation. Just a reminder to the board that this is another Dover protected use. Uh, would anyone, uh, like to make a motion to vote no comment or does anyone have any specific comment to the CBA? Artie? Uh, we have a motion by Paul to move no comment, second. Second by Artie, any discussion? Hearing that will come to the vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, uh, we've unanimously decided to, uh, vote no comment. Uh, I declare I'm for, uh, so all the next are the minutes for, uh, June twenty.
The other two minutes that are pending.
Uh, what else is on our agenda for our next meeting, Lee? Or Alex?
Uh, I don't think there's anything yet.
Okay, uh, so let's do that, then we'll hunt down the minutes. Thanks, Jean. Uh, Lee, did you have a reporter, Alex?
Uh, just a reminder, I think for people that they kick off meetings for the home community is this Thursday. Um, and which is very exciting. And we have a, we have a consultant on board, RKG. Um, this is the consultant that we hired and the contracts all been signed. Um, and so we're going to be kicking off that planning effort. Um, so for those plenty of members who can't attend, it might be a good idea. Just maybe to review the tape of the meeting or, um, just so that you're up, you're up to stuff on what's actually occurring.
Where and at what time?
Um, the meeting is going to be at.
Charles River Room.
Exactly. It's, it's in his room, um, at seven o'clock on Thursday night.
It's also virtual if, if anybody wants to.
It's also virtual.
It'll be, it'll be reported.
So I, I think at that meeting, there's kind of a, you know, an overview of what the charge of the committee is. There's going to be a review of the scope of work, um, what's planned and then what the timeline is. Uh, there's going to be a presentation on the MBTA Communities Act and how, um, what's required and how the announcement, uh, will be conducted.
Including the update with, um, mixed use.
Yes, there'll be a presentation with the, uh, about the actives. And then there'll be a presentation, I think, of what the housing plan, um, recommends as a. Um, concept to be actually modeled in terms of the CMBK, um, model. And there'll be a discussion about the public engagement process. It's going to look like, uh, moving well.
I noticed that, um, after the MBTA law was passed, that there was a policy. Guidance update on the inclusion of mixed use.
Right.
Has the initial plan been included to factor that in?
Well, no, the housing authority plan was done before that came.
Yes, of course.
So that wasn't happening during the summer.
Right, okay.
The housing plan that we gave was not in.
As a matter of fact, what we did, uh, in the housing plan is to say, uh, we're not going to talk about mixed use by right. Or standalone multifamily by right in the center in of town.
I recall.
We have a vision for that, that, you know, we had the plan that we, you know, ten years or so ago on that and we're not going to change that. Now, well, it is an opportunity to rethink that position.
Good.
Can I ask a question also? There's no, um, on Highland Avenue. There are no regu, I didn't see any regulations, especially in that area for, um, with kind of a street scape. Is that correct? In the area that we just looked at the project? Like when we're looking at the MBTA communities. If you're, if you're doing housing in some of those areas. Should there be a consideration? I mean, this is more for the home group, but it's just. As I was looking here, do we need a, do you need a front door to this building on Highland Avenue? I realized we have no requirements at all.
Not, not, not in an industrial. You have, you have requirements in Needham Center. You have, you have, that requirement exists in, in, in. In every square and all those other districts. This is an old landmark, this industrial district.
Right.
Sitting there for a long time. We tried to rezone it when I first came to Needham back in nineteen ninety. Um, ninety-three, I think, there was a call to refinance and it was unsuccessful. So.
But there's residential right on both sides of that little.
That's right. And there's a proposal that you can take the back portion of this and rezone it general resident. So when that general residence district was created, I think with the.
Yeah.
That this, a portion of this was supposed to be part of that. Uh, but the property owners at the time were opposed. And so that component of the proposal got dropped.
Okay.
And so this, this district sat there, um, was looked at and there wasn't a portable will as a part of that time that made any changes. And that's why I think, that's why you're seeing what you're seeing on this property from.
Right. And no, I totally get it. But I guess what I'm saying is that if we're looking at this corridor, we should think about the corridor as, as, as a planning board. As not only for MBTA communities, but also for areas that may have been neglected.
Well, I think the block there on the corridor is a business. I think most of the corridor, because you've got every square which would be done, it requires that front door along the primary street. Then you've got the business district that doesn't have that requirement at all.
Right.
Um, and then you're in Needham Center and along the investment stream and it's all. And that one block was, and Southern Barnes is, but another one was recently, it got dropped from the rezoning proposal back in the mid-nineties.
And as you remember, Paul, Natasha, on the, uh, housing plan, uh, we, we went to Webster Green.
Right.
And stopped.
Right.
We did not go any farther, um, east on Highland Avenue. With any proposal for, for multifamily housing because it's not transit oriented. It's, it's a, it's more than a fifteen, it's about a fifteen minute walk at least. Right to that fire station.
Correct.
And then when you go farther, you know, you're adding minutes. I remembered calculating that to walk to the Muzzy site is about twenty-five minutes from.
Right.
From, um, I, I tried it alone, looking at my watch. So that's really what I thought was. You know, that, that, that standard of a half a mile, that's the fifteen minute walk to, um, to transit.
But, but we keep on hearing from that same neighborhood, the fact that the buildings are not sized properly, that they don't, that they're not friendly towards the street. That they don't have the right proportions. So.
The problem there is that we're dealing with industrial. An industrial zone that's sitting in the middle of a residential zone.
Correct.
And that's, you know, and you know. The problem is we've got, we have an industrial zone. That building is as of right, it meets all the requirements.
I get that. I'm just saying, if we're rethinking that whole corridor for residential and you want to continue the street scape. Through until the other residential, we just need, we should be sensitive and responsible to look at the areas that were missing teeth at one point.
Except that it may be too late.
I don't want to debate the point. I think Natasha raises a good point that there's deficiency.
To be mindful.
For planning as own as.
The same way, and I know that this is controversial, but the same way that anything that's in the Dover Act. When they're in certain neighborhoods where the lots are certain sizes, the, you know, it goes five feet beyond. But in other neighborhoods, we just have to be mindful of different lots with different setbacks for street scape. That, that the, you know, the, the developers may not be sensitive to, and we have no say. So I, I just want to, there are certain things in the. In the zoning code that I think if we have opportunities to make them better. And to be clear, so that then the community is on board with what the zoning says. And if we're on board, it just makes our lives easier.
And if I may say one more thing, this is purely a question of taste. This is by taste. One of the things that I like in this project is that it's not on Highland Avenue. Adam, we're at the planning board.
Yes.
We have to have discussion about things and yet. If we had, if we have to be here until ten thirty or eleven o'clock, then let's be here till ten thirty or eleven o'clock. Stop looking at the clock and stopping us from making discussions, putting it off. We have to do our business, no matter what the time is.
I understand that we're not talking about the project now.
But we're talking about the street scape. We're talking about the Highland Avenue corridor. And that's my point, because this is a project that's on the Highland Avenue corridor. So one of the things that I like about this project is that the building is not on Highland Avenue. And it has this landscape, this forty-foot landscape buffer along Highland Avenue. When I saw that on the plan, I went, that is great. It breaks up Highland Avenue. And has a beautiful landscaped buffer. Going along there, so that it's not like it looks like now. From Webster Street to Gould Street, where it's all asphalt. From Webster to Gould. Asphalt and low-rise buildings. It's going to add some class to this section of town. Rest of the project is different. We're not talking about that. We're talking about this, we're talking about the street scape.
The concept of the street scape along Highland Avenue.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I yield before.
Lee, did you have anything else to report in?
No, that's all I was going to report that.
She's scared to report anything.
Alex, do you have anything to report?
Okay, yeah, can I just on the home really quickly? And, and Jean and I are going to be part of this, um. That what we're doing is we're planning basically one meeting a month, but then there's a community meeting in October and one in January and then one in March.
November the ninth is the first community meeting.
It's not what this is. And maybe this is old?
Uh, we, we get it.
Okay.
In the agenda packet, it was updated.
Okay, so maybe I have it the older one. I figured out the older one now, so.
Can you send me the updated ones so I can update the planning schedule?
I think you have the updated one. I don't know if we even. I, I will send both of you the, the updated one, except the ninth doesn't.
So, uh, a couple of updates, uh, for the Council of Economic Advisers. Amy, who is the town, was the town manager of economic development. Uh, has, uh, has moved to become the Director of Communications for the town. So the town is momentarily without an economic development manager. But has begun this, uh, the process to rehire. Uh, as chair, I participated in, uh, the first round of interviews. With.
The chair of which?
The CA. And, uh, because this physician does not report in the planning. Uh, which is why Lee and Alex were part of it, that Katie from the town manager's office is, because that position switched. After Deborah left. From being reporting in to reading, to reporting into the town manager's office. Because effectively, it's a, you know, it's an appointment from the select board, not from the planning board. So that was the genesis. So, uh, there were three candidates, um. And, uh, uh, the assistant town manager, assistant, uh, town manager Katie King is going to hold a second round. With some other people. I think, you know, in the next week or so, and then, um, I'll keep you posted with an update. On that, there are a couple of vacancies, uh, for council members and that's been advertised and. Uh, we have some interviews coming up for that. Uh, and then, uh, from the single parcel local historic district committee. Uh, and then, uh, from the single parcel local historic district committee, um, they will, we will complete a report, and that will come to the planning board the same way that we comment on something for the Z P A. It'll be in our packet, it'll be an opportunity if someone wanted to make a comment. Um, uh, before, you know, that is, I think, completed, and then we'll go forward for, through the select board for, um, uh, a town meeting by, uh, by law change, the general bylaws, not the zoning bylaw. So that's an update that I had, did anyone else have any updates?
Your, your, you're mentioning C A.
Yeah.
Did this Highland Ave project go through the C A?
No. Nope. Did not. Um, uh, so, that's the report, um. We received a phone correspondence. Uh, we received, uh, an email dated August seventeen from Resident Anika Law requesting a bylaw change that limit gun businesses. Guns, some towns, I think, have embarked on restriction, on restricting, uh, gun operations. Uh, got certain types of gun businesses. I think some, I can't remember if I saw something that said certain of those may be unconstitutional, certain restrictions may be unconstitutional.
I don't think it was, that was in the materials that the person sent.
Right.
But I, I wonder myself about.
This was brought to us by a resident before.
Yes, which is why I specifically identified the content of the email, so, um.
I noticed that the, um, right outfit and the global, the towns that have done things, they haven't absolutely excluded gun dealers, none of them have done that.
Correct.
And that would, that probably would raise constitutional issues.
Yeah.
Uh, but to say it's, you know, similar to when, um,
Yeah.
lawful use of marijuana came in, you, how many are you going to have, and where are they going to be?
Right.
You know, just setting some limits.
And I think the same is true, even the adult entertainment and creating a district for that, so. Um, but I don't think this is some, an immediate priority.
No, that's what we said the last time.
Yeah.
When we was brought to us before.
Um, we have an email dated August twenty-eight from, uh, Stanley Keller of three twenty-five Countryway, an email dated August twenty-nine from, uh, Norman McLeod of twenty-one Pine Street, an email dated August twenty-nine from Greg Darish of thirty-four Countryway, an email dated August twenty-nine from Lois Sockle of Precinct I, an email dated August thirty from Robert and Joan Onoffrey at forty-nine Pine. Um, and then we also had a, a public meeting notice from the town of Wellesley relating to large house construction. Uh, uh, which was.
No, I think, I think we need to mention that those emails from the residents.
Were, I will, were all, those emails from the residents were all relating to, um, uh, advocating to, for the town to appeal the, uh, to sit the, uh, judgment and the decision in the land court relating to sixteen eighty-eight Central Avenue and the daycare center. Um, so, uh, so that's correspondence, which brings us to planning.
So we're ready to.
Now, and now we have an opportunity to plan, and in particular, like Jean just said, uh, some climate action. Um, and, you okay, Ari?
Yeah, I need to get some water.
Okay, so we'll, so it's eight-thirty, it's nine-thirty.
I think we're back.
I gave you the opportunity.
I think we're back.
I gave you the opportunity.
And we're back. All right, so the last item on our agenda is to discuss some planning initiatives, in particular, it's climate action. Which is to go before town meeting for May, that was our goal that we had set and a priority. And Lee had added, I think, five hundred, six hundred, seven hundred pages to the package. No, not that many just for this.
No, I gave you the backup information.
Indeed. What I'd like to do now is kind of define this. Everyone's like the first floor, the second floor. I like to kind of define or scope, identify the action items and a schedule and move forward. Are you ready with that, Lee?
Yeah.
Okay, so. There were. From CAPC when they presented to us, they were really focused on. On three. On three areas.
Solar.
Well, in particular with solar, three specific areas. On. When it was organized. Solar canopies. So solar canopies over parking lots and structures, that was one actionable item. Commercial rooftop solar as a second item, and as a third item, small and medium sized. Ground based solar, there's no, you know, you can put solar up on a house, so there's no, there's no issue with that. So those are the three areas.
I think we should make some statements because there's, I mean, there are, there are. Elements that, that are trying to do some restrictions on solar period.
Our.
But so we have to be careful, we have to be careful as far as an allowance or a statement in town as far as. The propagation, allowing the propagation as far as solar, that, that's the goal.
You mean, are you talking, what are you talking about?
Well, even residential, make sure there's no restriction on residential.
We're not proposing it.
But it's coming. It'll make me go.
Yeah.
It's coming, it sounds the same.
Have you heard of someone specifically in the town that wants to restrict solar?
There are elements in the state that are trying to restrict solar by code.
So we'll.
Well, if there's a state code.
Yes.
That would trump anything that we do anyway.
Yeah, I'm not, let's, let's, I want to focus this on our bylaw. Now, our bylaw, the first element in our bylaw, in fact. I don't have. Alex, your zoning bylaw or. Or Jean has. That I will, thank you very much, but I, so when we turn to. You know. Any particular section, we identified, you know, a purpose, so. And we do have multiple examples of other town bylaws, Lee, are you familiar with those?
Um, I haven't sat a lot of time reviewing them yet. We were gathering them, but I haven't looked at, I haven't looked into the details of them yet.
So we, so we have multiple examples of a composite, and we also have policy guidelines from Duer. And the CAPC, Stephen Frale had sent to us some examples of specific. Changes that we could make. You know, we'll follow the same kind of structure as we do with the rest of our bylaw, we have a purpose, that's an opportunity. Already to identify that, you know, make a statement about what we're, what the purpose of that particular zoning bylaw is for. And it will focus on the affirmative goals of the town, but it's probably not going to mention something that may come from some other.
Yeah, I agree.
So again, our bylaw, the framework of our bylaw. Is, you know, is going to be focused around the solar canopies over parking lots and structures. Commercial rooftop solar and small and medium sized ground based solar, so. You know, we need to identify what the process is going to be. You know. For solar canopies, if we take them one at a time, solar canopies over parking lots and structures. You know, what do, how do we organize this? We can do it by right, by right with site plan. Or by, or by special permit. Duer and the CAPC have advocated to break it up by size, depending on the size of the installation. And I would need some kind of technical guidance. Probably from, and I spoke to a town engineer, there's someone in Tom's office, I can't remember who we mentioned. His focus, that is familiar with solar and so on, already I know you have expertise. Will need some, I think, I would like to get their participation, Lee. To identify what they would recommend for solar canopies by right. And then separating out for the next standard by size, so I don't know. I don't know what the sizes are and how to measure the size, but if it's something like. You know, what's going up over IDG's building, Boston Properties. You know, that would be, that's not a small project, so I would think that would be, I would like to allow that by right with site plan review.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything on a site plan review on the commercial ones.
Well, I, I don't, I don't want to create a barrier, we don't need it, if we have one that's, if we have a project that's small. We don't need site plan review, the building commissioner knows what those standards are and can act. I think we, unless there's a specific policy consideration for us, I think if we break it out by size, we need to know what that, what that. Standard is, what that size is. And then allow, allow the first, you know, the smallest section by, smallest size by right. I don't want to see us get into a special permit situation with this.
Well, I mean, Mr. Chairman, if we, if we, if we address. I'm not going to say possible scenarios, but if we address many things related to, let's say, stormwater. What's happened, you know, what has to happen with that type of thing, then when it gets to the building commissioner. He knows, he knows how to address it, he knows how to make a judgment.
Right.
And then how to permit, which means it doesn't have to come before us, because we've already addressed setbacks, we've already addressed stormwater.
So there, there is, there is. Like Stephen Frale had identified. Certainly for small scale projects, that's true, but as projects get larger. And something like. What we saw with, is it Boston Properties, Lee, is that? You know. They certainly were handling all the mitigation, but we as a board don't know what the potential impacts are. The adverse, the potential adverse impacts, so I'd like to have someone from the, you know, our town engineer's office. You know, give us a memo of what those are, and then we can talk to them about what the appropriate mitigation is, and then. But if, you know, if you've got a building. I, I. Forgive me for. The, for the example, but it sticks out in terms of size. Like eight eighty eight Great Plain, not talking about the merits of the project, just the size, if you can visualize what that building was like. That to me would be something like a small installation. It's bigger than a single family home, but it's a, it's a small commercial building. And if that could go through by right without a site plan review, that would be great.
Oh, absolutely, oh yeah.
So we just need to know what those standards.
Are you talking about carport, grandma, you're talking about the building?
So, so that, so that was a good, good point. That's a solar canopy over a parking lot, which would be. I only say eight eighty eight Great Plain as a function of size. Well, the size of the actual structure. Which is much smaller than IDG's building, IDG's parking, building is, is huge in, under the context of NEDA. And that parking lot, that parking garage is also large, and the installation that they're doing, you know, is, is quite large.
Well, I mean, if, if there was a building at eight eighty eight, and if that building then also had. Parking that they wanted a solar canopy on, yes, that would be, that would not be a large scale.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Yes, it would not.
Exactly. So we, I think we have some clarity in our direction there. What we need to know is what that standard is by size.
Yeah, well, I'll be, I'm going to show my ignorance because I haven't really been doing materials as much as I probably should at this point. But what I hear you talking about is a developer comes to us and says, I want to put on solar. I'm going to put solar on, on this project, and then it's a question of how we're reviewing his plans for it. I thought what we were. Talking about for our zoning was where we can acquire a developer.
I understand the distinction, I'm going to come to that, I spoke to town council about that.
Okay.
But to your, to the. First part of your comment. A developer will come to us in effectively these three scenarios that. The CAPC has identified to us, and this is the action that we'll take for May. These three scenarios are something like Boston Properties. That's one example. And then it would not be, so do you, do you remember that, so it's on Kendrick and the highway. IDG, the old PTC building.
Oh, yeah.
So, and if you drive by now.
So they said, we want to put on this solar canopy and the parking lot.
It was a special permit.
And, right, and that was a special permit, and when you viewed their plan for how they did it, and already had various suggestions for how they could improve upon their plan. And so, we went.
Well, that was a special permit because we had an underlying permit on the property that was amended. It wasn't a situation where a building had.
It was, right, okay, thank you for mentioning the distinction, so. In a scenario where there wasn't that underlying. Special permit that would then need to be amended. If they're only amending their special permit. Or solar. But I don't think that, that it should be a special permit process. It should just be a site plan review.
Well, once we have a special permit on it, depends on what our special permit says, if we. If it requires any change to the building, the repair or permanent amendment, then that's what, what gets triggered. I mean, so we have done some of them as de minimis changes, we chose to process that one as a special permit, I mean, I think we actually had a conversation about how should we process. Do we process it as a special permit or do it as a de minimis change, I think the decision was made to do it as.
By the scale, okay.
Can I, can I, okay, so. We, I was, why was the co-chair of the zoning committee for CAPC with Lee, with Oscar Mertz was the other question, but Lee was on it. The building. Dave Roach was on it, Justin Sevignano was on it, who has a lot of experience with solar, because that's what he used to do, and he's the tenant, he's the engineer.
Just, yes, what's his name?
Justin Sevignano.
Yes, that's what Tom recommended.
Stephen Frael was there for this particular meeting, and I brought in two experts, Andrea Love and Jacob Knowles, who. Jacob is with VR Plus A, and he and Andrea, Andrea Love is currently the president of the BSA, but she's also. For Payad Associates as the principal in charge of sustainability, I'm sorry, yeah, and. And basically, and they both worked, did lead, like she created, you know, was part of the team that did the USGBC, the AI Code, so all these people. They're the ones that created the stretch code, you know, part of the committees, they didn't do it themselves, but. We came up with, and we sent it to everyone here, is the recommendations for these different items, so we've already done this. With an entire group, so what I'm telling you, so it's modify zoning for ground mounted and rooftop solar systems installation for commercial municipal multifamily buildings. This includes heat pumps and energy efficient systems, so there's five different categories here. We need to review opportunity of sites, we need to review ease of permitting online and creating different fee structures. We'll need to create definitions, setbacks and approvals, review process, planning board, special permit by right, et cetera. Review stormwater. Bylaw for recharging, because what happens is that when you start adding another layer, you need to recharge for stormwater, right? Then stretch code and specialized, often stretch code, which are for commercial over twenty thousand square foot and residential. Install electrical capacity for fully electrified or by renewable energy, aiming for net zero warrant article adopted by town meeting. For municipal, PPBC would agree to pursue on its own, review adopting and reviewing zoning framework to see if there are any conflicts. So we already put together a framework of the things that we need to do.
So that's what we're doing now.
Right, but we already started one, so do we want to amend this one, or do we want to toss this one and start fresh?
All of this, this whole structure? Everything here is based on exactly that, so now what we're doing is we're taking that, and we're going to build in the detail.
I think, I think we're pulling, so we're pulling out part of that.
We're dealing with this. Not going to deal with the stretch code, because that's going to, that's like building code, that's, and that's through the, I think, the. A town meeting and select board. The planning board doesn't deal with the building code, so we're going to focus on the elements that are within our jurisdiction. And that's going to be what, what you guys talked about, solar canopies over parking lots and structures. Commercial rooftop solar, small and medium sized ground based solar. It brings up later in the discussion to some of the questions that Paul raised, bigger picture, special permit. To incentivize, for instance, can we use a special permit as an incentive to encourage commercial. Solar construction. And to, and to encourage developers if they wanted to get a certain size of a building. If they go solar, then they can exceed a certain height or number of stories, things like that. There are some legal questions about that which we'll come to, but what I'm saying is, we're all, we're already. Dealing with this.
So I guess the question is, one of the things was the review ease of permitting online, is that something that we're reviewing? Because that would, and creating different fee structures for different types of projects.
We're, I'm going to, if you'll bear with me, we're going to come, we're going to come to all of those issues.
I just wanted to let you know that we had done it, so I don't know if anybody remembers that we did this, so just.
Well, just as far as the permitting is actually fairly easy online, the NEDA.
So we can identify now, Alex, what the permitting process is online.
Yeah, it's actually fairly easy.
Ever. So what's the, adding, adding a solar application then? A widget to apply for solar, once we've created the bylaws, it's easy to do, it's not a problem.
Oh, once we do the bylaws, we can update the webpage so that it's consistent with what we've done, yes.
Yeah, so. So. With respect to. So with respect to solar canopies, that as a main heading, we're going to, we need. Some information from Justin, who will advise us on the size breakdowns, and that will resolve what will be done by right, and then by right with site plan review. And then.
So we're talking about over, over parking garages?
This is for solar canopy over parking lots and parking structures. Parking structure would be Boston Properties, and parking lot would be Olin as an example. And Olin might count in my mind, actually, can you please bring up? So we can, for the next time that we discuss this, the size of the Olin structure, the size of their parking lot. And then the, and the size. I'd like the dimensions of the. No, 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 of the Boston Properties. Parking garage, and what were you saying, you were saying?
Oh, I just said some.
Oh. Why, do they have a solar canopy?
No, 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 I thought you were talking about this potential spots where there would be.
No, no, no.
I just wanted to make sure I, I got this, because that wasn't focused, so we're talking about. Identifying the size of the solar structure that can be built over a parking lot as a right, and then what would be by special permit?
Not by special permit, it would be by right with a site plan review. Special permits are seen as a barrier to entry.
So.
So we, so Duer and Natasha's subcommittee recommended specifically for solar. Canopies. To have a by right structure, a by right process, and it would just apply to the building commissioner. And then separately, if it's a certain size of a structure. It would be by right, but with special, but with site plan review, so they would make an application, we would review it. The same way we do a site plan review on anything else.
Okay, would there be distinctions by district? So for example, would the same rules apply in the市中心 center, or apply in the industrial park? Or does it need to be more district centric?
I don't think it's a district centric thing, I think it's a function that itself in the size.
Um, I, I think there's a basic distinction between a primary use, which is what we, what we have now already. Large scale ground mounted solar, that's a primary use.
Yep.
And the other situations we're talking about seem to be accessory uses. So. I, I think we want, to me, I want to stay within the framework of our zoning bylaw, or not create some whole new chapter. We've got tables for every single district, on what is allowed as a primary use, what is allowed as accessory use. So you just create a block, and you describe what it is, is allowed as a primary accessory use, and you can either, in that block. Say, you know, by a certain size, require a separate approval, or you can even have a footnote, which we often do. And so then you, you go district by district and decide, this is the kind of district we want to allow. This accessory use, and they're different for different districts, like single family residents. I mean, we already do allow many of the solar and, and heat pumps and all kinds of. Of, of things that go in the direction of improving energy efficiency. But I think that would be the format to use.
I agree, and that makes sense, if we did it by district, then we figured out what the who, what was going to be allowed in what district.
Yeah, but I don't know, what I'm saying is, is a function, as a policy function. Separate from the framework of how we make these amendments, which would be like Jean is saying, you know.
You're saying what's by right, what's by side, what's, what's been.
I, I, yeah, I, I don't, I don't think that whether it's an industrial district, highway, commercial one. Or downtown business or neighborhood business. I think the standard is that size.
No, but.
I don't know, in December, you're not going to look at a site plan approval in the市中心 center? Even if it's small over the Walgreens parking lot?
The difference is.
Correct.
That the size in市中心 center. That we would allow as of right, don't even have to come to us.
Is smaller than.
Is a lot smaller than the size that we would allow. In.
Right.
In, in, in.
So it can only, so then it would be, so then it would be small, and then it would be by right. And that's fine, I just go to the building commissioner.
But what I'm saying is, you might have a, a much larger size. That we say, if you're in, and I keep calling it the industrial park, what should I call it, medium crossing, whatever.
Into square, triple.
So, you know, a certain size in medium crossing, you just go to the building commissioner. But that same size in medium center, we want to look at, because it's too big.
But that, so that's, so that's why I'm saying it's size based, not geographic.
It's size based, but the size, but besides.
But if you, if you take an example of eight eighty eight. That was, how, can you pull that up, Alex?
What about?
Eight eighty eight Great Plain, if you think of the footprint of that building.
Right.
That's larger than most of the buildings in the downtown. If you think of Harvey's, if the cats has wanted to put a solar mounted, oh, that's actually rooftop solar.
You're talking rooftop versus ground, I thought we were talking ground.
Again, we're talking about three different things, ground mounted, we haven't come to yet.
Okay.
Like Jean talked about, we have already in the bylaw for large scale ground mounted.
As the primary.
As a primary use, we would have, we would modify that whole section to include certain standards as a primary use. For small and medium sized ground based solar, that's one section. Another core section that we're dealing with is commercial rooftop solar, which we haven't talked about yet. And then what we're talking about now is solar canopies. So if you think of, if you think, I mean. A solar canopy over parking lots, you know, and parking structures, so. This would be for the Walgreens parking lot, or potentially the municipal parking lot behind. Cook. We don't have any buildings in downtown that have structured parking. That go up to the roof where this would be applicable. So it's, you know, and, and if we did, if you think of the size of, of the cats' building, it's a small building. If you think of, is it Gatto's building across from Town Hall, that's a small.
What's tiny building?
It's a small building, so's Cook, it's a small building, Lirando's is a small building. You're right, when you get to the industrial park, and you're dealing with much larger buildings.
Yeah.
And you're dealing with a building like. That has a parking structure, and there's, there's another one behind where the hostel is going to be near TripAdvisor. And then there's another parking structure that IDG had, which, you know, and that's what we're kind of talking about. So, yes, we'll break it out, as Jean's saying, in the, you know, in the districts of, by the use table. What I'm proposing is that we also, that we factor it in by size, so if the thing is. Is a thousand square feet, if the surface area is a thousand square feet. That's by right. And that would be true if it's a small building, you know, in the industrial area at the end of Crescent. Or if it happens to be a large building, you know, and if it's over a thousand square feet, I don't know what that measurement is, we need to rely on Justin. To give us, I think, that information. And then, and then we'll follow what Jean is proposing, and make that change in the use table. As an, this would be an accessory structure, we all agree, or an accessory use, we all agree this is not a primary use. And that's a very simple change, we'll have to probably make as well a definitional change. Throughout our bylaw to define what a solar canopy is. And there may be some other terms that we need to define.
Well, we, we, you talked about site plan review, we, we need to have this, a special site plan review to set the criteria of this particularly use. Because you can't just look to our general site plan.
No, well, it's going to be, yes, that again is where. So that again is what we. Why we want to bring Justin in, and we'll talk about it as a policy, I know you want to talk, just do one thing. For solar canopies, I think we permitted as an example for Boston. For Boston Properties, that was pretty much to the edge, like if you drive by there now, you see their.
Well, that's on the building, I mean, that's on the building.
It's on a structure, that's on the parking structure, that's what we're talking about.
Well, I think, yeah, a lot of things related to solar canopies, it's going to be, a lot of it's going to be fire safety standard, you know, the pathway of the fire trucks. Is setback, is setback even going to be an issue? I mean, obviously, we have setbacks for buildings, well, this, this, this is essentially a building. And that's a solar canopy, it's a structure. It's a, it's a structure, yeah, it's a structure. Though, if we're talking about setbacks, we may not have to have anything different than the existing, than the existing setback.
Right.
The fact is, we don't, we don't really know, we don't exactly know right now.
Right now, the, the existing setback, or at least in residential.
Zero.
No, it's five feet.
For.
For accessories.
For an accessory use structure in a residential.
Oh, 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 setback on the line, I thought you were talking about from the roof line, I'm sorry.
Yeah, but, yeah, I mean, yeah, but I think we have, whatever it is, we have to look and say, is that fair? Is it practical, is it fair, is it right? You know, in a residential, I don't really know, my five feet for, for, it's a solar canopy going on someone's house, but still. We, that's a starting point. That's simply a starting point, that and also the fire standard is what they need for the fire trucks. That's, that's where we're at.
I, I don't even think that that's actually relevant already, because the structure, the structure is not the solar canopy, the structure that. That Natasha's, Natasha's group identified was a parking structure.
Well, I'm confused a little bit.
Well, I'm confused a little bit by your, maybe, maybe the language, maybe it's right and I'm.
So it's also a parking lots.
Well, this is the thing, solar canopies that are ground, they're on the, they're ground based, solar canopy, they're on parking lots.
Sure.
Right.
Yes.
So you have ground based, small, medium sized, ground based solar, and so I'm, I'm trying, so.
I think that's more like.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, so to me, it's, there's solar ta- canopies um that are gra- that are ground based, right? So there are canopies that are ground based, then there's solar canopies.
Well, yeah.
Structures.
They're like on roofs.
Right, but the, the, I don't know what the small and medium sized ground based solar.
What, what, they're ground?
Yeah, yeah.
But it's being done on the smaller scale.
That would just be considered.
Based solar and then there's solar canopies on structures, in my mind, right?
So there, there are.
There are three.
There's a couple of different things, well, I think, I was, I was thinking of there's, there's, that there's canopies over parking lots.
Right.
There's solar ground over, over a structure.
Mm-hmm.
And then there's an installation similar to the landfill.
Yes.
There's just a bunch of solar panels that are put up as a separate independent use.
Yes, the ground, that's the growth, that's the ground base.
Those are ground based, right?
Solar canopy, m- most people wouldn't consider a solar canopy per se a ground based, right?
Okay, so there's ground base, which is what's at the.
It's literally sitting on the ground.
What's the difference between solar over a parking garage versus solar over any other building?
I'll tell you, solar. Oh, so, if a, if a, if cats wants, I'm not, I didn't pick on, on the cats' family, but if.
Go ahead, pick on the Jews.
If any landowner has a commercial building.
Yeah.
And they wanted to put a solar panel, like what Artie would install in your house.
Right.
Over their commercial, you know, you know.
Their little angled things over there.
Some, it depends on the roof structure, some roofs on the commercial structures are already.
You can't occupy it under them.
It's just, it's, it's like, it's a few feet off the roof.
Right.
And it can go right down to the edge of the roof line, and it can go from one end of the structure, the other end of the structure.
Yeah.
And go right up to the, to the ridge man. Depending on the pitch of the roof and so on, or as Natasha's saying, it's a flat roof. And sometimes they're, you know, they're.
They're angled towards the sun, or they're flat, we're doing a flat one.
But if it's over a parking door.
So if it's over a parking garage, then think of a bunch of light posts that support. Uh, you know, it's like a roof structure.
Because it's, oh, okay, because it's over.
Park under it.
That's right, you've got, you've got, you've got cars parking on the roof, basically.
Right.
It's a canopy, it's a canopy that's, you know, six feet off the ground.
Parking garage, and then the third one, the third one is just, you know, when you're driving down the highway and you see an array of them.
Well, that's what we have to do.
At the.
At, at, by dumb.
No, I mean, I mean, this is, this is pretty, this is pretty.
The third time.
This is pretty ea- easy to this thing, is there's simply ground bound, ground based arrays. They're ground based arrays, as far as what we're looking at here.
Yeah.
Ground based arrays, then solar canopies over parking lots, there's then just solar canopies over parking lot. That's what we're talking about, the solar canopies, parking lot, garage, are very, are very similar, but at the same time, there are some def-. There are definitely some differences between.
Then.
And then the ones over buildings.
Yeah, yeah, solar on roofs.
Then we have solar on.
Solar on roofs on a building anywhere in town.
Right. So there are.
It's like what we have, what you see often near the Glover leaves.
Right.
The Massachusetts. You know, but, but they're acres, like what we have is designed for acres.
Right.
And then, um, and then the third is like a parking garage, it's like a parking garage.
Yeah, yeah.
And you'd have a canopy.
Right.
Above.
Right, and the cars can park underneath.
Yeah, exactly.
Right, so there's three types, right?
Or you have a parking lot that's flat, like behind the book.
Right.
And then you've got, you know, support structure, and then the, the canopy is above it.
Right.
Or the, or the panels are above it, and that's also a canopy.
Occupiable.
So it's raised. You have cars in here, you have cars in here, might even have a van or a jeep.
There is, there is one fourth, there is one fourth, another fourth style, and that is, which people have been advocating for, that is. Allowing solar, all these solar canopies, but solar over the mechanicals on the buildings.
Wow.
Right.
Which is a, which is another version of a solar canopy on a building, well, it's, it's not a parking structure. It's simply, it's simply a, a much higher elevation of the solar on top of building pieces, it's above the piano.
I would propose that we deal with these three main categories. And then in the future, deal.
No, I think we have, I think there's some people that advocating for, looking at that now.
I, I understand that, but we can already see how complicated these three.
It isn't that complicated, it is not that, those, those, those are not that complicated, they are not that complicated.
Solar on top of the roof.
But.
You can include that.
You're dealing.
You can include a canopy over.
Mechanicals.
Over mechanicals, in the same, in the same bylaw that deals with putting, putting solar.
We already have, we already have a fifteen foot height extension, these are some of the policy questions that I'd like to get to today. You have, you can extend above the height for fifty by fifteen feet for mechanicals, right? If you add a canopy above that. For the type of weight and structure and height, but you're gonna be substantially higher than that.
Yep.
And they're all, so it's not as simple as we.
Well, that, yeah, that, that's the co- that, that is a complicated one, the, the other ones are fairly simple, over a parking garage. Over a parking lot.
Yeah.
On the ground, those, those are easy, those are pretty easy.
The building one is the most complicated.
Those are pretty easy to do, they really are.
So.
However, I just wanna bring up the, the one, if you put it over a parking garage, like let's say at the Muzzy site.
Yeah.
That increases the height of that parking garage.
Yeah, absolutely.
But.
So, going, so we will follow what Jean's framework is. We also need to add some definitions, and what, I mean, what are those elements that we need to define?
She has to do research, right?
I have to research, I think I told you, Adam, I, I was not prepared to really go into detail on this, I was prepared for the whole meeting, so I have not focused on this. Um.
So, you know, you were part of the, you know, the zoning uh section subcommittee of the.
With Lee, but we didn't get to the detail, so what, what I was highlighting, what I was highlighting was the things we wanted to do, like as we discuss right now. Uh, that I think is helpful is identifying sites that could be used as examples, right? We just, I mean, MBTA stations also is another place for, to make sure that, that we're not missing something when we create these. These zoning regulations, the other pieces, I do a lot of projects that have solar, some of them, there's not enough space to make it even viable.
Yes.
So we wanna make sure that if we're doing changing zoning and, and creating the as of right, that we make it so that it's viable, so that it's not so small that no one would ever do it as of right.
Mm-hmm.
And so I think that having, you know, maybe you're the expert on this, but we need to understand how much is realistic. For what types of buildings.
So, given the professional work that you've been dealing with, just the examples that you've raised.
We, we.
You need a lot of space.
Well, while, while we were trying to eliminate that twenty five foot requirement, basically open up. I'm gonna say the whole roof, within, within, within reason, especially if lateral raised, within reasonable distance from the edge. We're gonna take away that twenty five foot restriction, certainly at least, at least for solar.
So. Well, that's a policy consideration, because I do think there should be some setback at that.
We did, that, that, we are gonna have to look at variation.
We also, right, we also will need a number of definitions.
Mm-hmm.
So. Um. We all, and we all have all of this in our packet, like it's all laid out, we just have to go through it.
Yeah, it's only two hundred pages more, or longer.
Well, we wanted to plan, you're here, prepared to be here till eleven o'clock tonight or midnight.
Yeah, well, I didn't say midnight, I heard, I heard ten thirty.
So. So, like, if we're gonna plan, guys.
I, I guess, what I'm thinking is that some towns have already done this work, I couldn't reinvent the wheel, let's see what they've done and how they've dealt with it. And see what we think is.
You, so you've seen what other towns have done, because you studied it, you made a recommendation.
We didn't look at it in detail, because we looked at the entire plans, we were doing a big plan, we weren't doing. Super detailed, but if you go to certain towns and we can see what Wellesley has, we can see.
My recollection is that materials that were provided to us. By.
C P C.
C for L.
Mm-hmm.
Has both, has bylaws from other towns.
And, and Dewar also, which he got all that information.
And Alex, and Alex has been collecting that.
And Alex has been collecting it.
And my plan had been to go through those and kind of look at what they had on the parent table, maybe kind of distribution of whatever.
There you go.
That would be great.
In a framework, I just haven't had the capacity to do that, because I've been looking at the home committee.
Okay, so that's our, that's our walkaway.
We wanna wait for Lee to do that, or do we want her to send us some of these other towns bylaws?
We already have it in the packet, it's all in the packet.
Right.
We, we have three or four towns.
We have three or four towns. How many, how many does Lee have?
Maybe, maybe, maybe.
There aren't a lot.
So do we want Lee to put together a matrix, or do we have to create a matrix?
Ourselves, what, why, but like, we could take the time.
Yeah.
And, and bang.
Two pages, we've got lots of stuff in it.
Yes, but we could, you know, we can, we could do it ourselves, I understand Lee's good. You know, the, Hona's gonna take a lot of, a lot of time.
Well, we, we have the assistant, we have the assistant town engineer. We have, we have Lee who's just excited about doing this, you can tell, excited about, she's, she's excited about doing this. We, we can, we can, we can probably get ninety percent further along than we are now. By grabbing the, the comments that.
They've already embedded a lot of things.
Yeah, we can, we can get ninety percent further along there as far as some of the things we have to then dis- you know, disperse into the bottles.
So. If you guys would actually indulge me, and I guess we're gonna run out of time tonight. There are major pol- I wanted to highlight the major policy questions. That deal with each of these three sections. Then the rest of it is just the jargon from the other bylaws, and it's much easier, all right to them, changes, it's. But we just need to get through this.
Are you saying policy as in, as in by right or a review?
You, you, you and Paul as an example brought up, like, you know, adding, like what you first brought up. Uh, uh, doing a solar canopy over mechanicals of a building, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, do we, so one of the major policy considerations is, you know. Why do we increase that height?
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
Um, you also brought up the horizontal plane.
Mm-hmm.
Where right now, mechanicals can't exceed more than twenty five percent of a roof.
Mm-hmm.
You wanna exceed that, maybe we go to ninety percent, maybe it's ninety nine percent. We have to make a policy decision.
Yeah, it is probably just, on that, it'll probably be more related to, depending on the size of the building, size of, size of the project. There'll be a certain, it'll, the distance from the edge will vary, very small buildings, you're gonna get a little closer, easier to go. And then, but then also what happens is, you have, from a pure solar engineering planning standpoint, when you have large systems on roofs. You then put walkways in between.
Yes, exactly right.
Depending, if you have some panels on a walkway, so you're already taking care of some of this anyway, so there's just good, there's good design.
Right.
So, for example, we don't need the, you know, we don't need the nine, we don't need the percentage, is it simply good design? We need the certain sized buildings, roof surfaces will have a certain distance from the edge. And then we're gonna, and then the wide, then the large ones are gonna have walkways anyway, that's just how you do it.
So. So, um, so we have to make those po- my point is we have to make those policy decisions. Yeah.
Yeah, but, but I mean, I'm just saying, we're gonna be just guessing at this moment, like if, 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 if we could put together a chart and says, this is what this is going.
All the elements are.
What all the elements are, then at least we can make a, an informed decision, rather than just start throwing numbers out tonight.
So, I.
And Lee's excited about doing it.
I don't intend to throw numbers.
No, 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 but I mean, we'll, we'll try our best.
On some, on some of the issues that, um, it's been on my mind with regard to solar. Canopies on parking lots, that our bylaw, uh, it is quite strict and careful. About, um, about having greenery around our. Trees, bushes, ground cover, um, and. How, how is that possible with solar canopies? Now, I was thinking, oh, it's just not possible at all, we're giving this up for this. Um, I remember the name of the store is, I opened a store, you know, sells outdoor stuff on Route thirty in Framingham.
REI.
REI.
Yeah, they, they have a solar, they have a solar canopy. Canopy.
Canopy over their parking lot.
Mm-hmm.
And I was there recently, and I'm looking at, yeah, and around the edge, all three edges, they have greenery.
Mm-hmm.
They might even have a little corridor down the middle with some bushes, it's, it's not impossible to combine those things. But it's just something that I think we wanna keep in mind as we're, um, developing regulations and, um, site plan view criteria.
Yeah.
Um, solar canopies of, uh, old parking lots.
Yeah, again, I mean, there's gonna be certain economical factors as well, for example, when you're dealing with a solar canopy. If you have two lanes of parking that you have a solar canopy running down the middle of, then you have spanning out over those two lanes. If you have, but if you have one lane going around the perimeter, that becomes much more expensive to do that. Is you only, you're only putting on one lane, so there's certain things, there's certain thing economics that will take care of themselves. But talking about greenery, certainly you can have all kinds of greenery below the pan, your light's gonna get under it, you just can't have trees growing. You just can't have trees, but you're gonna have plenty of anything else under the canopies, you just can't stop them, it goes tall.
All of that, you know, I think is part of, you know, we'll get to site plan criteria for this type of laying, these are the considerations. So what I'm gonna do is summarize the, you know, the, the high level items. And then this is our homework for all of us to give consideration. We do have it already in our packet, the, I'm not sure what your timing is gonna be like, because you're gonna be dealing with Hona for the next.
No, but I, I think we can put together some of the preliminary information, so we can talk about solar at our next meeting, I think we can.
If you, that's great, if you can do it for our next meeting, that would be great.
Right.
So with.
I think I can focus on it for the next meeting, I just couldn't do it this way.
I see, because you were setting up on it, now I understand.
Because we're bringing up their stuff.
So, the commercial rooftop solar, I, you know, we wanna separate out, this is exactly what you're reading. Uh, separate out height and setback restrictions, allows solar and other carbon reduction tech. Uh, and mechanicals to exceed that fifteen feet on the horizontal plane, exceed the twenty five percent roof criteria. Uh, what are the structure, uh, setback, uh, distance, same as height, screening requirements that Jean was just talking about. That's for also commercial rooftop solar. Um, and then for small and medium sized ground based solar, you know, do we modify standards for placement, party, design. Construction, monitoring, modifications and removal standard, which I thought was very thorough to include. And then, we do need to consider the process. I, I think that we will have, you know, like I identified, there's a number of definitional changes. It, it would be good to have Lee as part of that matrix, a list of what those elements are that we need to define. Um, also, I, I'm happy to jump on a call with Justin, this week you're coming in and meeting this speaker next. And talk to him about that size thing, so I think we can bang that, I'd like for you to be a part of that one.
Okay.
Okay, uh, thank you, um. Uh, there are some suggestions on what those terms are to define. Rooftop solar, ground based solar, solar canopies, heat pumps, and energy storage systems, those would be the many things to define. Um, I, also, a si- a size linear element. And then what are we mitigating for, there's storm water runoff, there's pollinator protection, canopy preservation. Vegetation management, those were all part of the elements that you were dealing with. Um, and then Paul, you know. To your point earlier about the use of the special permit, you know, this actually is a Dover protected use. So there are, there are certain restrictions.
What's it, what's it?
So, so.
The Dover amendment, should chapter forty eight, section three.
Yes, you know, duh, you cannot prohibit, and you can only have reasonable regulations. So, so, so a special permit is a discretionary thing. And that does imply that you can deny it. So, we need to, so.
Well, then we get to the whole question about dealing sixteen eighty eight, and the sixteen eighty eight said you can't have site plan review on a Dover amendment matter.
So.
And if, and if solar is a Dover amendment matter, and that decision holds, we allow it to stand.
Mm, mm.
Then, you know, we're saying, you know, we, we have a case against Nito. That says we can't have site plan review or Dover amendment protected matter.
Well. Yes.
Yes.
So, that will, and so I. And so I, to that point, I emailed, you know, you and Chris. And. Uh he didn't quite address that question of, I think. The special permit, but there are complicating factors, and we'll have to bring him in. To the zoning, you know, to planning for this. At an early stage, not at the end, once we've, it goes the final language of the thing, but in terms of policymaking. Because if we're talking about certain sizes of solar canopies. By right with site plan review. And to Paul's point, as he's suggesting. You can't apply a site plan review if that holds, and you can't have site plan review on this.
Yeah.
So we need legal guidance on this now.
Uh can I recommend also that at the next meeting, I don't know if Justin is available, um and the build, the new building inspector, because. I think it would be good to, I mean, we, that's what we had when we had the committee, it would be good to just review all of it with them, since they have a lot of expertise, or. They will be enforcing it, right?
Yeah, that's a perfect idea.
So here we go, the next to last paragraph of chapter forty eight, section three, the Dover Amendment. No zoning ordinance, no zoning ordinance or bylaw shall prohibit or unreasonably regulate. Installation of solar energy systems or the building. Or the building of structures that facilitate the collection of solar energy. Except where necessary to protect public health, safety, or welfare.
And the question.
You can't put it where people can trip over it.
Yeah, the other piece I want to bring up is the stretch code, even though, so we have to abide by the stretch code, that's law, the law. So we should know if we're doing something that's unreasonable for the stretch code, we should know what that is, even though.
That's why we want the building commissioner.
Well, but just in general, when I mentioned the stretch code, you guys said, no, no, we don't have to abide by that, that's energy, but. If, if we're doing something that doesn't allow for the stretch code to occur, then we're in trouble too.
Are you saying, are you saying that the solar might be doing something?
Well, it's, it's just, eventually it's gonna go to net zero, so I, I just want to make sure that we, no, no, that we just take it into account.
You know, I wasn't saying that we're not gonna be creating any circumstance. That we would violate the stretch code and the opt-in stretch code.
But they, yeah, the opt-in, we haven't, we haven't approved yet, but the stretch code, I just want to make sure that anything that we, that we do, we take into account. How it's, it's not gonna prohibit needing the stretch code or whatever it is, you know.
We can't do that.
I, I know, that's why, but that, but it has to be taken into account, we can't just ignore it, yeah.
We're not gonna ignore it. And having.
Yeah, yeah, I don't wanna.
So with that, I guess I'd entertain a motion to adjourn, so.
Adam, I appreciate all you've done, seriously, all of that.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion on the motion to adjourn. Hearing that, I'll come to the vote, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, aye, there is no abstention or opposition, the motion carries, we are adjourned.